And we are now live.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the playing of the National Anthem and the reading of the invocation.
Are now live.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the playing of the National Anthem and the reading of the invocation.
Are now live.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the playing of the National Anthem and the reading of the invocation.
Are now live.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the playing of the National Anthem and the reading of the. It would appear that we are having some technical difficulties and the sound is playing on a loop. We're just going to try to refresh that and start again. My apologies.
As we come together today, we recognize the great responsibilities laid upon us. Our council will always strive to understand the needs of the people we serve and to use power wisely and well. Our purpose is to establish and maintain a city of prosperity and righteousness where freedom prevails and where justice rules. Let us also not forget those who've served our community, who are no longer with us, and we continue to do the work we must in their memory. Please be seated. Hey, we have Tanya Daniels, City Clerk, who's assisting us today along with Emma Boak. So, Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Certainly, Counselor Weaver.
Present.
Counselor Vanderstel.
Present.
Counselor Utley.
Present.
Counselor Schloss.
Present.
Counselor McCreary.
Here.
Counselor Martin.
Here.
Counselor Carpenter.
Here.
Counselor Antoski.
Here.
Counselor Van Tilborg.
Present.
Counselor Wall.
Present.
And Mayor Davis.
Present. So I'd like to remind Councilor viewing public, there are a few procedural rules for our virtual meetings. One is that all members are to remain muted unless they're speaking to reduce feedback. All web cameras for council members shall be turned on so that and left on for the duration of the meeting to ensure you count for quorum. Staff will request that a join the video meeting should the need arise to answer questions from council members. Any member of council should indicate they wish to speak by pressing the raised hand button in the participants' list screen. Clerk, stop, lower your hand. Once you're finished, any event or connection service interruption occurs that affects the quorum for this meeting, we may recess the meeting for up to 15 minutes. To regain quorum if quorum is not achieved, the meeting will automatically be adjourned. All members of council participating in the online video conference will vote using eScribe, and the clerk will announce the voting results. Members of the public who've registered as delegates will take part electronically via webcam or via telephone as the case may be for the meeting. All rules for delegations under the city's procedural bylaw otherwise apply. So we'll move into declarations of conflict of interest. I understand there is a number to make. Counselor McCreary, I understand you have first declaration to make. Please state your conflict and the general nature.
Mayor, you have me at a bit of a disadvantage. I wonder if the clerk might help me out. It's been a while since I submitted this.
Through the mayor, would you like me to answer?
Yeah, if you could. It's in respect to a planning matter where the one in Grand River Ave that's actually being postponed, but I.
Mayor, thank you for the refresher. Yes, this is concerning two planning matters that were postponed at the Committee of the Whole, and I have a conflict because I own a property immediately adjacent to the two developments. Thank you.
Right. And Counselor Vanderstel, I understand you have several conflicts you wish to declare regarding several items.
I do, Mr. Mayor. There are 38 of them. No, I'm just joking. There's only three. They are 12.1.3, 12.3.3, and 13.6. The reason for the first, 12.1.3, we will be operating an Airbnb as super host in the near future. The second reason, which would be for 12.3.3, would be the Jubilee, 10 Jubilee site mentioned by Counselor McCreary previously, is within 250 meters of the aforementioned Airbnb. The third is 13.6. The reason for it, landowners are long-term customers of Serenity Country Candles, our family business. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't hear you, sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Vanderstel. Counselor Wall, I understand you have a conflict you wish to declare.
Yes, sir. 13.6. My brokerage is involved.
That's the request to remove land from the trigger area for 4943 Mount Pleasant Road.
Yes, 13.6.
Right, 13.6. So, members, is there anyone else who needs to declare a pecuniary interest regarding items during the agenda tonight? If so, raise your hand electronically. Not seeing that. I think that clears that up. So we'll deal now with the separation of items. And just a reminder that there the resolutions, item 13.1 to 13.7, they're dealt with individually through the resolutions. We're dealing with separating items in the committee reports, and there's already a list that are now separated. We have Bylaw 12021, that's the Bylaw to adopt the City of Branford official plan, and item 13.6, the request to remove land from the trigger area for 4943 Mount Pleasant Road. They'll be discussed early in the meeting as there is a delegation for Bylaw 12021, following our normal rule. For separate committee items, we, committee items, we also have 12.21, Children's Services and Early Years Funding Update. There's an amendment coming from Counselor Weaver. 12.3.2, Applications of Zoning Bylaw Amendment, PZ 1120, and Draft Planet Condominium. That's 181 Grand River Ave because of the two conflicts of interest that were declared. 12.1.3, Proposed Regulations for Short-Term Rental Accommodations because Counselor Vanderstel declared a conflict on that one. 12.3.3, Applications of Zoning Bylaw Amendment, PZ 1020, and Draft Planet Condominium. That's 10 Jubilee Ave. Again, close to the 181, 180 Grand River Ave again. Counselor Vanderstel, Counselor McCreary declared their conflict. So are there any other items that members would like separate? I see Counselor Weaver, you've raised your hand. What would you like separated?
I guess there, Mr. Mayor, 12.3.8, which is a payday loan.
Sorry, let me get to the list here. 12.3.8, Payday Loans. Done. Anything else? Nope. Counselor Martin.
Yes, item 12.4.1.
12.4.1. That's the boundary review.
The council governance review.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else anybody wants separated from the committee reports? So I just want to make sure I've got them all out.
Mayor, Counselor Carpenter has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 11.1, please.
Sorry, 11.1?
Yes.
It's a 12.1.11 or? I'm having trouble finding it. They all begin with 12. There's 12.1, there's 12.2, 12.3. Can you tell us what the item is, the subject matter?
It's 11, the minutes. I have questions.
Oh, the minutes, sorry. I was looking at the committee reports.
I think it's specifically 11.3. Sorry, it's 11.1. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Saying no other has, I think that does it, so. So Counselor Vanderstel, can you please move the motion to approve all items in committee reports 12.1 to 12.4 not separated for discussion purposes?
Oh, move, Mr. Mayor, seeking the second. My word made, I assume?
Yes, raising his hand, Counselor Weaver is seconding that. So now to ask Madam Clerk, would you please read out the title of the items that will be subject to this vote, and then please proceed to the vote.
Thank you, certainly. From your Committee of the Whole Operations and Admin, item 12.1.1, Film Annual Report 2020 and Policy Amendments. 12.1.2, Museum Sustainability Plan Implementation Progress Update. 12.1.4, On-Road Active Transportation Wayfinding Plan and Implementation. 12.1.5, Intern Progress Report on Pilot Project for Physical Security Guard Services. 12.1.6, Spalding Drive Pedestrian Crossover. 12.1.7, Ada Avenue and Palmerston Avenue Proposed Access Restrictions. 12.1.8, Fire Route on Private Property, 77 Diana Ave. 12.1.9, Speeding Driver Slow Down Signs. 12.1.10, Community Safety and Well-Being Plan Draft Priorities. 12.1.11, Kids Ride Free Program. 12.1.12, Power of Attorney Resources and Information for Seniors. 12.1.13, Closure of Pedestrian Stairway from Usher Street to West Street. 12.1.14, 2020 Council and Committee Attendance Report. 20.1.15, Community Programs and Social Development Department, 2021 Priorities. 12.1.16, 2020 Annual Summer Report for the City of Branford Water System. 12.1.17, City-County Liaison Committee Composition. 12.1.18, Garden Avenue Traffic Calming. 12.1.19, Neighborhood Association Community Safety Projects. 12.1.20, Natural Burials. 12.1.21, Infrastructure Installations to Support Neighborhood Ice Ranks, Community Gardens. 12.1.22, Always Stop Control, Hamilton Ave, Avondale Crescent Street, and Albert Mail Street, and Hampton Street at Rowan Wood Avenue. 12.1.23, Engagement Regarding 34 Norman Street Development. 12.1.24, Motion to Amend Something Previously Adopted, Essential Workers' Day. 12.1.25, COVID-19 Immunization Clinic Relocation. From your Social Services Committee, 12.2.2, Homelessness Individuals and Families Information System Quarterly Update. From your Committee of the Whole Community Development, 12.3.1, Applications for Zoning Bylaw Amendment, PZ-16-20, Draft Plan of the Subdivision 29-20501, and Draft Plan of Condominium 29CD-20505 for 575-538 Coburn Street. 12.3.4, Application for Zoning Bylaw Amendment Removal of Holding Provision, PZ-01-21, and Extension of Draft Plan of Committee and Approval, 24 Mountain Pleasant Street. 12.3.5, Single Source Procurement for the 2021-2022 Corporate Insurance Policy. 12.3.6, Honoraria and Expenses Report for 2020. 12.3.7, Order Bylaw. Those are all your items. I'll proceed now with the.
Yes, please.
Certainly. All items not separated for discussion purposes carried on a recorded vote of 11 to 0. Those voting in favor, Counselors Weaver, Vanderstel, Utley, Schloss, McCreary, Martin, Carpenter, Antoski, Van Tilborg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right. Thank you. We'll move then to item 6, 7, 8, Statutory Public Meetings, Recognitions of Achievement Proclamations. And for this evening, there are no such, there is no statutory public hearing, no recognitions, no proclamations for this week. So we'll move into nine presentations, delegations. Like to remind those in the meeting today that this is a city council meeting, and the following rules of decorum apply as set forth in the city's procedural bylaw. And they are, one, no person shall display any sign, placard, or banner in the meeting room other than materials that, in the opinion of the Chair, are legitimate audio visual aids necessary in connection with any presentation made to council. All persons shall use polite and respectful language, and shall refrain from the use of any language or the making of any gesture that is disrespectful or offensive. All persons addressing council shall speak only in the subject in the debate, and shall not speak any other subject matter. No person shall applaud participants in debate or engage in a conversation or behavior that may disrupt the proceedings of the meeting. Members, tonight we have one presentation and two delegations. So we'll begin with the presentations. First one is 9.1.1, Sean House, Building Planning, Planning Services, City of Branford. And he is going to be speaking to the Temporary Use Bylaw in respect of outdoor patios. And so Sean, if you can, where are you? There you are. So just a reminder, you've got 10 minutes for your remarks and questions from council members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council. My name is Sean House. I am a planner in the Development Planning Department here at the City of Branford. Just wait for the slideshow to get going. I'm here this evening because staff is bringing forward a temporary use bylaw to assist local businesses with establishing outdoor patios on private property in order to recover from the economic impact of the pandemic and provide safer areas where physical distancing can be maintained. Next slide. Specifically, this will be achieved through a temporary use bylaw that eases parking restrictions on private property associated with these patios. Next slide. By way of background, on June 16, 2020, City Council had passed a resolution to allow for the establishment or expansion of private outdoor patios and on-street patios. This was when restaurants first began to reopen, following the first wave of the pandemic. Specific to this evening, City Council had further directed planning staff to prepare a report regarding a temporary use bylaw respecting parking requirements associated with outdoor patios. Next slide. The bylaw will state that, notwithstanding Table 6.1, a temporary outdoor patio shall not contribute to the required parking calculations for a restaurant or other business, and may occupy space that would otherwise be required for parking. For example, if a restaurant wishes to establish an outdoor patio on three required parking spaces because there's no room elsewhere on site, it would not be required to establish these spaces elsewhere. Further, the additional tables on the patio would not count towards occupancy for the purposes of a parking requirement calculation. The reason for this is that the interior seating of restaurants will not be running at full capacity due to the pandemic. Next slide. On this slide, I've included three provisions in the temporary bylaw that would keep patios from obstructing required works, accessible parking spaces, and would allow further conditions to be imposed if deemed both reasonable and appropriate to safeguard public safety or mitigate nuisances. Next slide. The temporary use bylaw will work in conjunction with existing patio Branford policies. These policies further regulate the establishment or extension of these patios. The report before council this evening also recommends that the patio Branford policies be extended to three months after the expiration or termination of the declaration of emergency. This is to allow businesses a three-month grace period to adjust back to normal operations. The applicable legislation for temporary use bylaw can be found in Section 39 of the Planning Act. Ontario Regulation 34520, made under the Reopening Ontario Act, exempts City Council from Planning Act requirements for these types of patios. As such, council may pass such a bylaw without holding a statutory public meeting, and the bylaw is also not subject to appeal. This is to recognize the importance of allowing local businesses an opportunity to reopen. If council approves the proposed bylaw this evening, it will be effective immediately. Next slide. Oh, sorry, and one more slide. The city's official plan also provides direction on temporary use bylaws. The planning staff are of the opinion that the proposed bylaw conforms to the official plan. Next slide. To conclude, planning staff recommend approval of the temporary use bylaw and extension of patio Branford policies. The temporary use bylaw should be rescinded at the earliest available council meeting, three months after the expiration or termination of the declaration of emergency. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yep. Thank you, Sean. So Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just question for Sean. Sean, so the previous, so last year, when restaurants had applied, are they grandfathered in, or did they have to reapply every year? You're muted, Sean.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
They'll have to reapply.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Van Tilburg.
Yes, how many, how many restaurants in that took us up on the patios last year?
Three, Mr. Mayor. We had roughly 30 restaurants that established a patio last season.
That's across the city?
Yes.
And when, I just, you know, just remind me, when did we do that? Was that later, late in the year?
That was brought forward in mid-June 2020.
And how long did it take someone to register and go through the process?
It's pretty quick. We respond to those within a couple of days. We have a kind of a scope review process for them with a building department and public works and the fire department.
All right, thanks. I'm assuming it's going to be easier for those that have already done it once.
Counselor Schloss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, are there any changes to what we did in June, or can they assume they have the same process to follow?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's largely the same process. In terms of the policies, we're only extending the expiration date.
Okay, physically, there's nothing different? There's not more control or guidelines that have been installed this time?
Only the temporary use bylaw to formalize the parking exemptions.
Okay, so there's no surprise when they go in to do it. If they purchased the materials to create a patio last June, those materials would create a patio that would be acceptable this time around?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Vanderstel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Sean. Do we have the capacity to potentially increase the amount of area that they can use for a patio? I mean, this is year two of struggling in this industry. Is there, is there something that we might be able to look at in case that application comes forward and somebody requests more space? Have we, are we prepared for that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, can you clarify what you mean by more space?
Can they make the patio bigger? Do we have, are we prepared to allow them to make the patio bigger to help save their other business?
We are permitted that it's not going to obstruct any of the required work, like works such as a drywall, fire hydrant, or an accessible parking space.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Carpenter.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Sean, for the excellent work, by the way. I just want to know, how are we going to communicate this out to the public, to the businesses? Is it possible that we could communicate with our local Chamber of Commerce who could then communicate to the restaurateurs in the community to make sure they know this is a viable option for them?
Through the Chair, Sean, I can speak to that. Maria Vasaki, Director of Communications and Community Engagement. Through the Mayor to Counselor Carpenter, we do have a plan to issue a media release following the outcome of tonight's meeting, and would absolutely include the Chamber and the BIA on that communication.
Thank you.
Counselor Wall.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I just had a question about, suppose clause two, where it's approval at the earliest available council meeting after the termination of the declaration of emergency. I guess the declaration of emergency might end I guess before COVID has actually gone away? I don't know if you understand what I'm trying to say. I'm just wondering if that's the best. Can I just get clarification on that wording? Because imagine that the what are the conditions for the declaration of emergency ending versus what are the economic impacts and how long they're going to be felt for the business? Does that make sense? I'm trying to word this correctly.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. The way we've designed this temporary use bylaw is that it would be rescinded after the pandemic or the emergency is over, and we'd be going back to normal operations. This is seen as a kind of a relief effort during the pandemic.
Mr. Rogers, you want anything to that? Thanks, Sean.
If I can, to Counselor Wall's first question, through, Mr. Mayor, there's 20 requirements for the emergency declaration. And we meet every four weeks, myself and the, as the commander, and I make a recommendation to the, to the, to the mayor to continue on the emergency declaration. At this point in time, they're meeting five of the 20 declarations. It looks like we'll be meeting them for quite some time as this numbers keep the way they are. So, but there's 20, 20, 20 areas you're, you asked, Counselor Carpenter, we're meeting five of the 20.
Okay, so we've gone beyond the 10, but can still have, ask questions when we get to the discussion on this item. So the next item is, that's, that's it for staff presentations. We did have two scheduled delegations. One, Mr. Hitchon, in respect to that Triggerland, Trigger area request on 449453 Mount Pleasant Road. He has withdrawn the delegation request relying on the correspondence that was circulated to all council members in advance of this meeting. So that leaves us with Lucia Johnnyak. Hope I'm pronouncing that right. And that's in reference to the City of Branford official plan. I believe you're there. Yes, you're there. Thank you. So you haven't done this before, Lucia, but you have 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes, to make your presentation, and that includes any questions council members may ask. So the floor is now yours.
Don't forget to unmute.
Yeah, don't forget to unmute.
Okay. I would like to thank Mr. Mayor and Counselor.
Okay. I would like to thank Mr. Mayor and counselors for the opportunity to present our position and support of the proposed official plan amendment to bylaw one dash twenty-twenty-one pertaining to the property identified as Area twenty-six eighty-eight Golf Road, Branford, Ontario, on Schedule ten. I did forward the contents of my presentation for all to follow along if possible. My name is Lucia Joniak, and I, along with my sisters Janine Heather and Susan Hardy, are joint owners of seven point eight acres of property at eighty-eight Golf Road. This property was purchased by our family in nineteen sixty-eight as a ten acre property in the township of Branford. My parents built, and I mean, they personally put every board, every nail, every shingle, and even built their own foundation forms to pour the cement. This home was completed in October nineteen seventy. My family occupied this home until two thousand seven, at which time my father had died the previous year, and my mother being eighty years old. We felt it not safe for her to be there alone. We were able to sell, we were unable to sell the property as one piece and separate the home at one thirty Golf Road from this property and moved mom into the city close to where we could properly care for her. Just to fill in the history a little, when the property was purchased, it was in the township. It was a through road with an underpass to bring us out to the road leading to Paris and a partially completed four oh three. In nineteen seventy-seven, the subway under the CN tracks was closed off so that the four oh three could be constructed to Rest Acres Road. In nineteen eighty-one, the city annexed this area. And with that annexation, we were told that city services would be made available. It is now forty years later, and the services have still not arrived. There is a nineteen eighty document entitled The Report on the Branford-Brant Local Government Pilot Project Dealing with the Annexation, which stated that, quotations, "The negotiators have agreed that in the case of rural properties entering the city, full city taxes should not be charged until full city services were available," end quote. This has not happened. Then in nineteen eighty-eight, the tranquil nine-hole golf course that abutted the property was developed into a luxury subdivision called Ava Heights. We did not complain of any of these things happening, as these lands were now in the city, and development was seen as progress and under strict city supervision. We did not want to stand in the way. We had hoped that with the development of those lands, we would finally get the city services the annexed lands had been promised. This has not happened. With the subway closure and Ava Heights subdivision taking place, it did negatively affect our property. There is a stream running along the edge between our property and Ava Heights within the wooded area of the property that was displaced by the construction. The city was advised of this in the early nineties, along with GRCA, and nothing was ever done to correct this. We also found out that this stream drains lands along the four oh three Myrtleville and Woodlawn subdivisions. It has now flooded out portions of our once beautiful woodlot and is now being called a wetland. In the fifty-three years that we have owned this property, no entity has ever maintained this water course, which traverses many properties on Cherry Hill Lane. And we have been unable to ascertain whose responsibility for keeping the water flowing. To make matters worse, the culvert under Golf Road was placed too high, and only a portion of the water course is able to flow to the west side of Golf Road. This results in excess water left in, to flood the front portion of our woodlot. Upon our examine, recent examination of the stream, we found that there are many large trees that have fallen and blocked the flow, which in turn forces stream into multiple tributaries. We are trying to work with the city to correct this issue. With the, when the annexation was complete, we were advised that the zoning on the property was H dash R one A and has remained that way for decades. It is purely by accident that we found out that the designation in the new plan was going to change us to core natural. We were never notified if such a dramatic change was happening to our entire property. When we severed Mom's house in two thousand and eight, the report that came from the city stated the following, in quotations. "Planning staff have reviewed the proposed severance application and are of the opinion that the use of the severed and retained lands for residential purposes is consistent with the overall objectives of the provincial policy statement," end quote. It went on to say, quotations, "This application is consistent with the policies outlined in the Places to Grow Plan. The eventual development of the retained lands will provide for infilling within the built-up area of the city. Policy two dot two dot three of the Places to Grow Plan requires that forty percent of all residential development be located in the built-up areas of the municipality." Under the analysis portion of the report, it also stated, quotations, "The permitted uses of the lands within this designation include single detached, semi-detached, duplex and triplex dwellings to a maximum density of thirty units per hectare," end quote. Knowing this zoning had been in place for decades, we never thought that, that there would be such a dramatic change to our entire property without some kind of negotiation. The legacy left to us by our parents was evaporating after fifty-three years, yet we could see the potential for some development that could bring the city much-needed tax revenue. One of the interested developers was Pat Menciani. His vision was to build a gated community on this site, but unfortunately, his illness stopped this plan. I am enclosing a site plan commissioned by Pat for you to see the potential. We reached out to our counselors for help, and John Slus and John Utley, who made a site visit and have assisted us with this amendment to bylaw one dash twenty-twenty-one, and we agree greatly appreciate this. We have had a number of developers interested in the property, but upon hearing of this core natural designation have backed away due to this hurdle. Upon closing, in our opinion, the proposed designation, without this amendment, would unnecessarily constrain our lands, surrendering them undevelopable. The designation appears to be applied at a high level, which does not match the reality of the on-ground conditions. At minimum, approximately half of our lands are free of any visually obvious natural features, and that should not be constrained by the core natural designation. We further note that these lands are proposed to be within the delineated built-up area and could thus provide a suitable development opportunity to help the city accommodate forecast population growth and meet intensification targets. If the lands are constrained by a core natural area designation, this cannot happen. We respectfully request that you pass this amendment to bylaw one dash twenty-twenty-one. Thank you, and I invite all counselors to have a drive-by and just to view the property and see the beauty of the land out there.
Thank you, Ms. Joniak, a very succinct presentation. I think we had a couple of counselors would like to ask you a question or two. We've got about two minutes.
Of course.
So Counsel, Counsel Utley would like to ask us some questions.
Hello, Lucia. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's nice to see you again, and an excellent presentation on top of the two visits that, that we've had out there. My first question is, your intent is to sell the property so that your sisters, your family can enjoy the legacy from your, 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 your parents. Is that, is that true?
Yes, that's true. We have no skills to do any kind of a development on our own.
Yeah, and certainly you want to maximize the, you know, the, the value of the property and, you know, looking at the property. It's certainly, it's certainly has a lot of development, you know, potential in the, it would be the north end, I suppose. And my next question was, did the, has the GRCA been involved in your property?
They have an area that's designated under their control, yes.
Yeah.
But it's in the woodlot, and we still have approximately three hundred and sixty feet of, of property that's not within their purview.
Thank you, Lucia.
So your time for one more question, Counsel Martin.
Thank you. Did I hear you correctly that you were not notified of potential changes to your property under the usual review?
Yes, that's, that's correct. And I even, when I did find out about it last May, I sent an email and got no response, objecting to that core natural. Got no response. I thought, well, maybe they've decided that it shouldn't be on there. Then again, in January, we were told by a developer looking into it, and we put in a formal inquiry and dispute against the core natural, and we did not hear anything again.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Joniak. I think we understand your position, and we'll be dealing with this very shortly. We'll try and deal with it immediately after the delegations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's it for delegations. So we'll now move on to the Clerk's reporting communications. Counsel Utley, I believe you've got the motion to receive the Clerk's reporting communication for the month of March twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be delighted to do that. Move by myself and second it by my wardmate, Counsel Slus, that the Clerk's report on communication for March twenty twenty-one be received.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on this item?
The Clerk's report on communication has carried on a recorded vote of eleven to zero. Those voting in favor, Counselors Weaver, Vanderstel, Utley, Slus, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, and Toski, Van Tilborg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Tania. So move into number of item eleven, which is minutes. I mean, Counsel Slus, I believe you've got that motion to adopt the minutes. Please read out the motion. State your secondary.
I do, Mr. Mayor. It's move by myself, seconded by my wardmate, Counsel Utley. That the following minutes be adopted, namely eleven point one, special city council meeting held February twenty-third, twenty-one. Item eleven point two, special city council meeting, March ninth, twenty twenty-one. Special city council private and confidential meeting held February twenty-third, twenty-one. And finally, special city council private and confidential meeting held March ninth, twenty twenty-one. That the following minutes be approved, item eleven point five, the John Noble Home Committee of Management, March tenth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right, and on the John Noble Home, I think it's, we're just receiving those, I believe. Great. So your secondary is your wardmate, I assume, Counsel Utley, I believe?
That's correct. And I believe there was a, Counselor Carpenter had a
That he, he requested.
Eleven one.
That's correct. I've got a note of that. Before we get to that, any errors, omissions, and the regular special council minutes, or any discussion on the John Noble Home Committee of Management minute, minute, meetings, minutes? Not seeing any. So we'll deal first in respect to Counsel Carpenter's request. We'll deal first with eleven point one. The special city council, February twenty-third, twenty-one. So Madam Clerk, let's take a vote on that separately.
Just one moment. The minutes for, noted as item eleven point one for special city council, February twenty-third, have carried on a recorded vote of ten to one. Those voting in favor, Counselors Weaver, Vanderstel, Utley, Slus, McCurry, Martin, and Toski, Van Tilborg, Wall, Mayor Davis. Those opposed, Counselor Carpenter.
And if you would now take the vote, please, on the remaining minutes, including the John Noble Home.
All remaining minutes have carried on a recorded vote of eleven to zero. Those voting in favor, Counselors Weaver, Vanderstel, Utley, Slus, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter, and Toski, Van Tilborg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Tania. So I want to move to the committee reports dealing with the items that have been separated. So as per our usual practice and keeping with council's desire to first address items for which there were delegations, we'll begin with item thirteen point six. That's a request to remove land from the trigger area. And I realize there wasn't a delegation, but we do have to deal with that probably before we deal with the official plan bylaw, which gets moved up because there was a presentation on that. So we'll move then to that item thirteen point six. So that's a request to remove land from the trigger area, four forty-nine, four fifty-three Mount Pleasant Road. We also had some conflicts declared in that. So, I need someone to, to move that and read the resolution. So Counsel Weaver, if you'd be kind enough to do that. Do we have a secondary on that? Counsel McCurry is seconding it. So Counsel Weaver, if you could just read that, that motion, please.
I ask Ms. Mayor, is the clerk able to put it up on the screen?
Yes, she can.
Thirteen point six, request to remove land from the trigger area, four four nine and four five three Mount Pleasant Road. A, that the request to remove four four nine and four four, four five three Mount Pleasant Road from the trigger area be denied at this time. And B, that city staff be directed to review the request to review to remove four four nine and four five three Mount Pleasant Road from the trigger area in the future, either concurrently with related official plan amendment application to include four four nine and four five three Mount Pleasant Road in an expanded settlement area, or through the next city-initiated municipal comprehensive review for settlement area expansion. And C, that the city be directed to review any further requests received to remove lands from the trigger area either concurrent with the related amendment, application to include the lands in an expanded settlement area, or through the next city-initiated municipal comprehensive review for settlement area expansion. And D, that the city clerk be directed to forward a copy of the report and council's recommendation to the County of Brant. And am I able to speak to this, Mr. Mayor?
Speak first.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you can speak. And just a reminder that since we haven't dealt with this before, there's four speaking up, two speaking options, there's four minutes each.
Thank you. So I have a question for city staff. I'm not sure who would be taking this question. It's probably regards to planning matters, so.
Nicole, probably? No, or we're gonna have Alan. I guess Alan's gonna do it.
All right, great. So Alan, so I'm sure you're aware that the developer's been in contact with me kind of throughout the process. And from having a conversation with them today, they've also been in connection with most of the rest of council. And really, the settlement that the developer's saying is that councils approve, would like to approve this type of development. So could you explain to us how we would do that, please?
Through the mayor to the counselor. To approve this type of development, first, the land would need to be, A, taken out of the trigger area and B, also added to the settlement area. And there's, there's a process for adding lands to the settlement area through a future official plan amendment, either led by the applicant through the permissions in the growth plan and in the new official plan that will allow settlement area expansions up to forty hectares. The other opportunity to do that is through the next municipal comprehensive review, where we would look at the settlement area again. So, so that's the, the process where it could So so that's the the process where it could, where it could happen.
So what's the timeframe for both of those? And which one would be quicker?
The timeframe for a city initiated municipal comprehensive review typically would be the five year. Official plan review. Now, our new official plan is going to be a new official plan, so technically, we're not required to review it again for ten years. But it's it's likely we choose to review it before then, I would say, within five years. The ability for an official plan amendment application would come sooner than that.
And so what's the timeframe for that?
Well, after the new official plan is approved, the.
What was the date that was coming? Sorry, Alan, what was the date that was coming to council for approval? Do we have a date picked out yet for that council meeting?
Well, that's that's tonight's council meeting, that the bylaw will be adopted to. Or the bylaw will be passed to adopt the official plan, which then allows us to send it to the province for approval. So the provinces, the provinces.
Go ahead.
Sorry, the provinces approval, you know, hopefully will happen before the end of July. And and then we'd be able to consider applications to amend the official plan. We would, we would need a council resolution to enable a, an official plan amendment within two years of the approval date of the OP.
Okay, so um, in the resolution that's before us, it basically, A, basically states that we deny. So what happens if council changes that denied to approved?
Then really, the impact is that the lands won't be in the trigger anymore, as long as the county council agrees to that. And we would receive some direction to make a boundary, a met boundary adjustment amendment agreement. To to formally take them out of the trigger, it wouldn't change their status in terms of their official plan designation. So in a sense, it really just puts them further up in the queue of lands that are remaining. To be added to the settlement area. We basically have two different areas. So we have those lands that. Were were not in the trigger but weren't able to be included in the settlement area boundary at this time. So that includes. You know, the blocks we've talked about, C three, C six, C nine, and then the second group were the trigger lands. This would be moving them from one group to the other. But again, their 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 land use designation and stats would stay the same.
Counselor Weaver, did you want me to put you down for a second time?
Um, yes, please.
Okay, uh, next, Counsel Vantilburg.
Yeah, I believe there's a desire to to make this happen. So my questions are. What, if any, are repercussions regarding moving this off the trigger land? Like, what, is there any downfall to that? Is there any problem with that? That's my question.
The the only implication is that it, you know, could be perceived as being jumping the queue. Again, moving from that one group of lands that are waiting to be put in the settlement area to to the other. And that's the only implication.
So this would strictly be a decision on our part to move a piece of land. It's not actually what. Happens on that land with that. Is that accurate then? We're just saying we're gonna move this piece of land into the settlement portion from the trigger. Is that correct?
It's not moving it to the settlement portion. It's it's just simply taking it out of the trigger.
Okay. I guess I'm, I thought that the point was to make it part of the settlement. What, what is the difference to this then, I guess? For them to do this, do they not have to be part of the settlement portion?
Right. They would have to do an amendment later. An official amendment would have to happen later on in order to. To achieve bringing it into the settlement area.
Obviously, procedure is going to be a big thing here, because because again, if someone else were made to come forward this. What guarantee would we have that they would actually follow through with what they told us of plans? In other words, while I have no, no doubt that this would be the intent. If we've moved something, it's like, I'm not, I'm not gonna do it this way. I'm gonna do something different. I can make more money this way. Do we have any recourse in that, once we've moved it?
What you would be moving, if you're wanting to take it out of the trigger, again, is simply to change, take it out of the trigger. It's not, it's not an endorsement or an approval of any particular development application or proposal.
Exactly, but I think what's motivating us is what the proposal is. And so I, I, I mean, we, I've seen where council have went, went through, jumped through hoops to make something work, and we've all benefited. And I think this is a case where, I believe, and I've written here for others, that there's a, a possibility that there's gonna be a lot of win-win here. And that, but we have to do it in a way that is fair, protects us, and makes sure that we get there. So that, that is why, I guess, some of these questions seem to be a bit beyond me in the procedure, again. Because I don't want to get stuck halfway for the process, or if this all of a sudden, there's that some draw, long drawn out five year. Engagement before we even can see a shovel in the ground. So I'm gonna sit back, take my second chance after, to speak. After I hear what other counselors have to say. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Sorry, Nicole, did you want to add anything to that in response?
Thank you, Mayor Davis, through to the counselor. I just want to clarify that the request before us this evening is to remove this property from the trigger lands. The trigger lands was established through the boundary adjustment agreement. It's really the concept of phasing development. And so the intent of that agreement was to, that these lands would remain agricultural until the lands within the settlement area. Or are hit a development benchmark of being eighty percent built out. By removing these lands from the trigger area, that does not change the land use status of this property. They would remain agricultural. They would then need to go through an official plan amendment to change the designation of the property to more suitably something residential to accommodate the. The proposed development, which is at this point a concept. It's not been submitted as a planning application. But then also, we would be in a situation where we would need to further add these lands to the settlement area. In order to support that development. The issue then becomes that we have other lands that have been evaluated as part of our settlement area expansion. That were not included in our proposed settlement area because our growth projection numbers do not support that. So what I'm getting at is, is that this is a multi-phased and multi-stepped process, and which is why we are denying that this. Request not be approved at this time and that they submit a request in concert with a full official plan amendment. As well as a request to change the land use designation so that we can comprehensively evaluate the impact and how this. You know, could proceed. But at this stage, it does not change the land use designation. It would remain agricultural. There are many, many hoops that they would have to to go through in order to get from where they are today, in order to have an approved. Planning application to support this development.
Counsel Vantilburg, that used up your four minutes, your first four minutes. So I'll move to Counsel Sless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I'm a little confused now, whether Nicole or, excuse me, Alan can can explain. How large is this piece of property we're talking about?
Through the mayor, offhand, it may be about seven or eight hectares. I can't recall exactly.
Okay. Now, it, so this isn't one of the cases where we're adding it to the settlement area, and now we have to redo studies. Because we we've changed the formula and 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 now the the minister can accept or reject or. Can delay the approval of our, of our official plan that we're submitting. It is, am I, am I going down the wrong road or is that the right road?
Through you, Mayor Davis, to the counselor. No, that is the, that is the correct road. But I think we have to go back to the fact that that's not exactly what is being requested here. There, there are several steps or several. Requests that that can be made. They are requesting that they be removed from the trigger area. And council can, within their powers, may grant that request. It does require approval from, from Brant County as well. But what is also being suggested that in doing so, that if council were to approve the request to remove them from the trigger area. That you also consider putting them into the settlement area. And when we start to go down the road of of adding lands to our settlement area, one that are not evaluated lands and not part of our land use evaluation. That is problematic, as well as adding lands to our settlement area that is in access of the land bank that is required to support future growth. And if that were to occur, we would not be be able to proceed with the passage of the bylaw for the official plan this evening, as that would be a major impact to our OP. And it would cause us to go back, require further consultation with the public, as we're now impacting multiple property owners. And it would throw off really the alignment between the official plan review. And approval of the OP, as well as the alignment with with our DC and area-specific DC study that has been tailored to, to coincide with this process.
That's a lot to chew on there, Nicole. That, I appreciate the the explanation, because it gets a little muddy here. It it sounds like there's a lot of approvals have to be made. Like, it's not simply saying, okay, you, you, you can build what you you're proposing to build. And and that's the end of that. There's a whole lot of steps. I guess the first step would be if the county would even allow this to take place. That would be our starting point.
Uh, through the mayor to the counselor. Yes, you're absolutely correct, that this, this is contingent on, on the county council approving the request as well. And so there is a process to that, but you're, you're right, there's, there is considerable impact and implications. Which is why we are suggesting that this is really, that these requests really need to be dealt with in a comprehensive manner. Because the implications to them are far reaching, and staff need to be able to evaluate those and present those in a, in a comprehensive way to counsel for a decision. But also, further to that, we have to remember that. This is not an actual development application. It's not been vetted through staff. There's been no technical work done to support this type of development. It's a concept that would be required to go through the regular planning process in which we regularly bring applications for development before you. So so that you're absolutely correct, that there are many, many steps involved in this to get to, or to get from where we are today. To ultimately seeing a development on that property.
Right, and just finally, if I've got time, Mr. Mayor, th- there's, from what I understand in conversations that I've had, there's a lot of. Commitment being made of things that one will do in the future, as far as the developer is concerned. That they're prepared to take on costs for this and costs for that, and to prepare to build certain types of this and certain types of that. This would not, approving this would not guarantee any of that to happen, correct? The original formal agreement to allow any of that to be. Concreted in on the city's part. It it's simply accepting someone's word, and I'm not doubting their word is is not good. I'm simply saying, we have no legal grounds to say, well, you said you were going to do all these things. You asked us to do this.
Can you wrap it up, Counsel Sless?
Sure. So in other words, there's no way to protect the the city's. The city side from the proposal that's being discussed and goodies being offered by the developer.
Through the mayor to the counselor, I can confirm that there has been no development application submitted for this property at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, first time around would be Counsel McCurry, then Counsel Utley, then Counsel Carpenter.
Mayor, thank you very much through you to staff. So so to be clear then, if. If we were to. To change the resolution before us tonight and remove the words denied and add opposite language in, even if the mayor approved that as a. An appropriate amendment. Are you saying, Nicole, then, that that would delay the enactment of the official plan that's before us tonight?
Through the mayor to the counselor, no, just for further clarification, that it is only, council may move to. Essentially approve the request and and remove these lands from the trigger land. That is step one. And the only implication to that would be that it would be an implication to the boundary adjustment agreement, and we would have to prepare an amending bylaw. On the premise that we're assuming county council is going to approve. It is only if you give direction to staff to remove them from the trigger land and add them to the settlement area that it impacts the official plan.
So if we were simply to change clause A then, that has no implications with respect to official plan?
That's correct. Clause A. If you change to be denied to approve does not impact the official plan. It also, clause B is tied to A, so clause B would be be struck as well. If you see that before you.
If I might just help, I I anticipated this discussion procedural viewpoint, and my view is.
Mayor, if you'll pause my, pause my counter while you're expounding, please.
Yeah, no, I'm just telling you, because you've raised it, I'm gonna tell you that you'll have to vote A and A and B down separately and then put forward. An alternate, so. I don't subtract that. I'll subtract that from your four minutes. Go ahead.
Most gracious of you. Thank you very much. Now, we've heard from this developer that they expect that they would be able to get a ministerial zoning order. Could you explain what that means?
So a minister's zoning order would allow for the minister to change the zoning on the property without. Any public process or input, and a minister's zoning order is not appealable. It does require submission to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and it is something that is approved directly by the minister.
The municipality would have the opportunity to comment on that, though, correct?
The municipality, to be quite honest, I I'm not, I, we have not gone through a minister's zoning order before. I believe if we were to prepare the zoning bylaw amendment, then we would have ample opportunity to provide comment on it. But given that there are very little consultation requirements associated with MZOs, then I I can't guarantee that the municipality would have an opportunity to comment on it. If we were the initiators of that application.
And it's also my understanding that county council has, has given this, it, their blessing should it meet with our approval. Do you know that, Nicole?
I don't know if they've given their blessing, but essentially what, so the request went to county council first. I believe it went on February twenty third, and it was essentially just referred back to staff upon sort of the direction that we will. And I'm paraphrasing, we will wait to see what Branford County, where Branford Council does.
Okay, um, that wasn't exactly the version I heard, but I'll I'll take that as accurate from you, Nicole, certainly. Thank you very much.
All right, Counselor Utley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to staff. I don't really, do we know if there's any services running to those lands at the current time?
Through the mayor to the council, I do, no, there, there are no services running to that property.
And if, in the best case scenario, if, let's say, this was approved and and it went through. When would be able to start collecting taxes? Would it be in five years, ten years? Or more?
I'm definitely not the expert on on tax collection, but until we see that property redeveloped, I don't suspect is when you would. I suspect is when then you would start to see tax collection. And and as I said before, development of that property, in my view, at this stage and where we are at today is, is. Is not in the near future.
Thanks, Nicole.
Counsel Carpenter.
Thank you, Nicole, for for clearing it up. I I understood it when I saw this resolution on the, on the, on the docket. First of all, I I sent an email to the clerk's department because I wanted to know, how did this resolution get here? Because I don't recall a notice of motion on this resolution. And I'm told that it was moved forward as a priority item by the mayor or the CEO, I'm not sure which, but that's what the clerk's response was. So this is before us because there's some emergency to it to be on on the docket tonight. But removing the trigger lands has nothing to do with our official plan going forward now, does it not?
Through the mayor to the counselor. So yes, we did deem this matter to be urgent. So we did receive a request. To bring this matter to our council. And the timing of that request that came in, we weren't able to meet our March. Ninth Committee of the Whole Community Development Meeting. And so we did seek a request to put this on the agenda for this evening. With the understanding that while it is a request to remove a property from the trigger lands. There are much far-reaching implications associated with this request, and there could be an impact on the official plan. And so we thought that it was prudent to have this matter before council prior to the consideration of the official plan to to be transparent as possible.
So let let me be clear then, and even if we move, remove this from the trigger lands, which aren't supposed to take place till eighty percent of all the other lands have been. Used up, including the lands north of Powerline Road. This would still require a municipal conference review, which was a, which is a study and a request and a public consultation process. It takes what, almost a year, correct, if I'm wrong, and to be added into the settlement area before then, it could even be then rechange the zoning. To actually have something built on, and then it would need services provided to it from the municipality, as well as, as all that to happen. Would that not be correct?
Through the mayor to the councillor, that's mostly correct. So they can remove the property from the trigger area and that's just a. That would just only impact the boundary adjustment agreement, but to add the property to the settlement area, you're absolutely correct that it would require. Further consultation as well as a technical analysis to support. Those lands being included in the settlement area as I think I've indicated as well that we did not evaluate the potential for these lands to be added to our settlement area. Because they were in the trigger and they are meant to be the last lands to to come into the settlement area for development purposes. And we evaluated other lands which are outside of the trigger, but. Not in the trigger, but also are not within the city settlement area.
Well, one of them would be area nine, which councillor Tusk and I've been arguing about for Powerline Road to command and council did not accept that argument. Because of the having to redo municipal conference review would have to be done over again and all that process has to be done. So let me just sort of put it this way to you. So the settlement area in this official plan that we have here now, they're the number one lands. The number two lands would be the lands that aren't in that settlement area that would come in later on. Like area nine and others. And then the third on the on the list is the trigger lands. Would that be fair?
Through the mayor to the councillor, I think that that's a fair assessment.
So but by removing this as a trigger lands, it is in fact jumping the queue. And then then getting a ministerial orders because maybe it knows somebody in the ministry that this land then jumps the queue. Even the power line road lands and it gets added in as part of the city's growth area automatically. That could happen by ministerial order, could it not?
Through the mayor to the councillor. So in essence, yes, that in removing these lands from the trigger, you're you're removing them from that that queue. And they could develop an advance of lands. That have not been included in the settlement area, but were not also within this in the trigger land. So that is a correct assessment.
And while I have a few seconds.
You want me to add you a second speaking time?
Sure, I'll I'll try and take four minutes next time, too.
Still going around the first time, I think councillor Martin, then Antoski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to staff. Tonight's first time I've heard about this ministerial zoning order. Would that override the fact that these lands are in the trigger lands if if we go forward with what's on the. Agenda this evening?
Through the mayor to the councillor, ministers zoning order can override any zoning that the city has. The province can impose it. They do prefer to get council endorsement of a ministerial zoning order, but they're not required to. It's something they could simply write and impose on the city. So whether it's in the. The trigger area or. Or regardless of its designation.
Okay, thank you. That. That means anything we do here tonight could possibly be redundant if they do in fact have the ear of the minister in some shape or form, so. Good to know. Thank you.
Councillor Antoski.
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of the MZO, MZOs, if we're Canadian, I would I would recommend that for those of us who are not familiar with those. I I for once am very nervous about going down those that road. If you want to look at where that's happening in other municipalities, it's not a very welcomed thing and and. Then you get different different organizations and groups, you know, a council might approve it, but maybe. You know, the conservation authority is not in favor of it, but it's still being put through. So so I'm I'm a little bit. I'm a lot skeptical of going down that road and opening up the door for that because I I fear that once that door is open. That we lose more of our. Our decision making locally. So so that's a that's a concern. And also just very, very simply to to change this to be approved tonight, it's absolutely jumping the queue. We've already said no to other properties. And the argument against those other properties was everybody needs to wait their turn and. So I think that we, you know, we we've gone through this whole road of developing the phases in the OP and we've agreed to those and. I I think that we need to keep those in phases. Otherwise, maybe we we should have done what was suggested at the beginning is just open it all up, but we're trying to manage growth and. I I don't know how you pick one over another, particularly when we don't have an application to really know. Anything more than a concept. That's that's a little bit of a concern as well. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, now I get to speak. I want to clear up misunderstanding. This is not here due to any decision I made. I believe staff brought it forward as a matter because it could theoretically get tied into the plan. So I didn't deem this to be anything. In fact, I'm opposed to this request. For many of the same reasons that councillor Carpenter set out. This is this is the third stage lands and. The trigger lands, going back to the boundary agreement. The trigger lands were important to the county because it creates a buffer to future to future annexation, right? Because they. They they get to say whether or not that that trigger land is developed. And the theory was they would not be doing that unless they saw the settlement lands being used properly in accordance with the density requirements, et cetera. So. I'd be surprised the county would do it, but I mean, if they 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 do, then. But anyways, I totally agree. It's jumping the queue. There's lots of other lands in the trigger lands. And if we're open the door to trigger lands. We should tell everybody, hey. Fire sale, trigger lands, come on up. That's essentially what it amounts to. That's you can't. It's it's not fair. To all of the lands within the trigger lands to take one and deal with it specifically in isolation to the rest. So. You know, I'm opposed to that and ministerial orders, a real subject discussion, the Ontario Big City Mayor's Caucus and EMO. And I've heard Minister Clarke say several times, he doesn't do it unless a municipality asks for it. And I want to make it clear, I won't be asking the minister to come here and do a ministerial order and undermine the integrity. Of our official plan and our and our zoning bylaws. We spend a lot of time, money and effort. To manage growth in our community so it works for us. And I hold dearly to that concept that we're the ones that manage it. And I would certainly fight hard against any attempt to use a ministerial order. In our unless it was something we agreed for as a majority of those council, it was a necessary thing. So I think I've made my position clear. I'm not in support of this. Mainly because of the idea to me of fairness and jumping and jumping the queue. I see it exactly as that. So. Anybody else want to speak? Hasn't spoken a first time. I think most everybody has. Councillor Weaver, second time around.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have some additional questions for staff. So I'm sure if Alan or Nicole, but you had stated that. Probably the official plan would be approved by the ministry probably by June. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, assuming that our bylaw gets adopted and passed this evening. We will submit it within 15 days to the province for approval. They aim to have a decision within 120 days, which puts us towards the end of July. So hopefully before then.
Okay, so if. I I'm just trying to navigate our way through this and I I guess I should fill in a little bit of a of some of the blanks here. So. This developer has has approached myself and many other members of council. Basically stating that they have a desire to build some affordable housing in this area, which that they would pay for, which is great. And they would also they've also indicated to me anyway that they would pay for the infrastructure because the. Current area is not doesn't have water pipes or anything like that, but they would pay for that. So that's another cost that the municipality would not have to put forward. And they also have, I think, probably just verbal agreement with Habitat to do some Habitat homes in this area as well. So. That is why I'm interested in it, but I have heard loud and clear some of the settlement of the concerns of some of the members of council. So. My question would be is after June or July, once we get the official approval back. Is this something then that would get moved forward to discuss and to see. Where in the queue it would lie or is there a way to move it forward after the official plan's been approved?
After the official plan's been approved, then we would be able to consider official plan amendment applications.
So I'm wondering. Sorry, go ahead.
So through that, we would hopefully have a more. Concrete development application that's been submitted. And then we would be able to assess it through the amendment process. And we'd be able to. You know, look at things as to, you know, how much affordable housing is being actually proposed in this development and. Engage in agreements that would make that happen. You know, right now we don't have those things.
Okay, so for what we have before us today, I I don't, based on some of the comments that were made, I don't believe it will pass today. So. I'm wondering if it would make sense to defer this until after the official plan has been approved. And then it can come back and it can go through our regular process. Does that make sense as far as a process?
I I think through the mayor to the councillor, I I think our recommendation is this establishing that process that, you know. Does not be approved now, but that. We council evaluates and. Speaks to these requests to be moved out of the trigger lands in concert with. Future OPA, official plan amendment application.
Okay. So you're suggesting we just move forward with what's before us and then if if there's a desire of a member of council, we can bring it back after the official plan's been approved. I just want to be clear on what direction we should be following here.
Through the mayor to the councillor, I think Alan's absolutely correct. Like our recommendations establish that process. Once our official plan is approved. Applicants can submit privately initiated applications to. Change the official plan amendment or sorry, a designation as well as to apply for settlement area expansion. And and in that process, we can look at. The subsequent removal of properties from the trigger lands and we can evaluate those in a comprehensive way. So I don't think we need a deferral or a referral of this matter. But in approving the recommendations before you were establishing that process and once the OP is approved, they will be free then to submit applications to start that process when they're ready.
So when when the city is able to take those applications in, are we able to stipulate at all that priority will be given to any developer that's going to be building a certain percentage of affordable housing? Or is that just illegal or something?
Through the mayor to the councillor, we don't have those types of stipulations with respect to our official plan amendments or whatnot, but we would definitely be, you know, if if we did receive applications, we would we would point those out to council. And those would form part of our recommendations to council on the ultimate application.
Okay, thank you. All my questions have been answered. Mr. Mayor.
All right, so councillor, second go around councillor McCrory, then councillor Slus, councillor Van Chilbrook.
Mayor, thank you. Through you to Nicole. So if we were to lay this on the table tonight. That would leave this open to debate at a later date. Where someone to bring it back. Is that a is that a position that staff might think is appropriate?
Through you, through the mayor to the councillor, I think what you're asking me is if the recommendations before you are appropriate for council to consider this matter at a later date.
Correct.
Yes, absolutely, because what it what it's doing is is establishing a process by which the applicant will have to provide a comprehensive plan and application that will then be. Before you and will give you that complete picture as you consider those those requests.
So just to be clear, because I think you I think you answered a different question. So by by approving the recommendation before us, is that what you just spoke to the process? Because what I intended was, Nicole, rather than debate this tonight, if we were simply to lay it on the table and take no further action until it's brought back. That would seem to me to be an appropriate way to proceed with this. Is that something that you would you would agree to?
My apologies, councillor. I was just asking for the clerk. I was just conferring with the clerk. If council chooses to defer this matter, then then council can absolutely deal with this request in its entirety at a later date.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor, would you come back to me and I'll I'll move to defer this or lay it on the table when everyone's spoken?
Yeah, thank you. Because we have a couple others that want to speak a second time. Councillor Slus, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess through you to to Nicole. I I think we're making something that's very simple, very difficult. If if we approve what's on the floor now. That puts an end to all of this discussion. If the proponent wants to bring forward something, anybody that owns any land can bring forward an OP amendment. At any given time, once we have an approved official plan. So we don't have to do anything. The ball is not in our hands. The ball is in the hand of the developer. And if the developer wants to move. A concept forward that he thinks is advantageous for himself and the city, he has every right to do that. Once we have an official plan approved and in place, he can come and ask for an amendment to that plan. So I I don't understand why we have to. Approve that we're going to talk later or that we're going to do something. That's all up to the developer if he chooses to submit a plan and an OP amendment. So am I seeing this all cockeyed or is that the simple way to move forward?
Through the mayor to the councillor, I if if you're asking me that question, then I would say that the answer, then you're you're absolutely right. There would be nothing in preventing if council approves the recommendation before them this evening. There's nothing preventing this applicant from moving forward with a fulsome request at a later date once our official plan is approved.
Right. And by by delaying this or or moving this forward to have another discussion about it. That discussion can't take place until we're done with the official plan being approved by the minister anyway, correct?
That is correct.
So it's as broad as it is long. We're putting ourselves through a whole process for no for no apparent reason. So I'll be supporting what's on the floor and if if the proponent believes they have a good a good idea, then. I would encourage them to come forward once we have an official plan and I guess the cards will fall where they fall on on an amendment. So appreciate it. Thank you, Nicole.
Next councillor Van Chilbrook.
I knew we would get twisted up in the procedure on how to get somewhere. I. I really liked what I had heard on the phone. And I just heard that today and I've only seen, of course, I've only seen this resolution today. So that's how quick this is. And now that I understand. I also concur with councillor Slus that if there's no reason for us to delay, if we pass this. Then I actually can get some materials with some substance behind them. I actually don't have a single piece of paper writing scribble. I do know what I've heard and I've certainly certainly liked what I've heard, but I have nothing in front of me. And I just, I'm afraid if we delay, we're actually going to delay more. And I would rather get this through, see something come through the process. I know when we see it. If it comes through as it has been expressed, we will like it. And we will then jump through the hoops after official plan's done to bring this forward in in an expedient fashion. And of course, we all know. Speedy in government is still very slow, but it would be as quick as we possibly could. I don't. I I don't know if everyone's had a phone call or knows. What's behind this. But again, you know, even when councillor Weaver mentioned possibly a verbal agreement with Habitat for Humanity, and I heard it as a deal with Habitat for Humanity. You know, so we that all has to come together. What I hear, I really like. And I would like to see it. I would like to see it get there. And I don't want to trip us up with delays and procedural things that we think might get us there quicker and don't. So I'm I'm comfortable. At this point, particularly hearing staff and the mayor. With the direction that this is taking, I first thought that perhaps. If we don't do this, we would have no way forward in advancing the proposals here, but it does seem like we do. So. I'm still not 100%, but I'm probably 95% knowing that I'm going to be voting to support the what's on the floor.
Councillor Martin, second speaking.
I move, we call the question.
Move to call the question. Do you have a second around that? Councillor Weaver, seconded. Any discussion on the. Resolution to call the question? Councillor Carpenter.
Yes, everybody hasn't had their right to speak twice yet on this, and I think we should exercise some decorum and allow all members of council to have their two speaking opportunities.
Point of order, a motion to call the question is ordered after everyone's had one opportunity to speak. Yeah, I think it's in order. If we think it's inappropriate, we we vote it down or not. So. Yeah, I think it's in order. If we think it's inappropriate, we vote it down or not, so.
I never said it was out of order. You were asking if I'd comment on it and I was interrupted by councillor Martin.
Yep, that's, I agree with councillor Carpenter, that was inappropriate councillor.
Was there a deferral on the floor or not?
There's no deferral on the floor. My councillor McCurry indicated that he would probably bring a deferral. But we have the properly put forward a motion to call the question. Any further discussion on calling the question only? Councillor McCurry.
Mayor, thank you very much. I would urge folks not to call the question at this point in time. I would like the opportunity to bring forward an amendment to lay this on the table for future discussion. I would say that I know most of us were very interested to hear about the affordable housing component that exists within this proposal that will come forward. And it would appear that the developer has not been equally forthcoming with all members of council. It was mentioned earlier that they were, they did express a willingness to pay for the services, which would take that off the municipality's checkbook. But I think if we, if we allow this to lay on the table, that allows the developer to perhaps bring their plans to maturity, to flesh out.
Yeah, councillor McCurry, this is, this is the resolution's calling the question.
Yes, and I'm making the case for not calling the question, Mayor.
No, you're making the case for something else. So I assume you're saying, don't call the question now because I'd like to put something on the floor, this deferral that I talked about.
I believe that's what I did say.
Yeah, well, you're arguing for the deferral. So councillor Utley, to respect to the question, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support what's on the floor. I feel very uncomfortable for those that.
Apologize, I apologize to interrupting councillor. We're talking about calling the question, so. So the discussion right now is to whether we call the question right now.
Okay, I support what's on the floor.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on calling the question?
Councillor Utley, we're just awaiting your response.
Patient here. Are we, is this the vote that's what's before us?
Oh, this is whether we.
Okay, thank you.
Calling the question without further debate or discussion.
Motion to call the question is carried on a recorded vote of five to four. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Sless, Martin, Van Tilborg, Mayor Davis. Those opposed, councillors Utley, McCurry, Carpenter and Toski.
All right, so madam clerk, would you please call the vote on the resolution that's on the floor?
Item 13.6, a request to remove the land from the trigger area 449 and 43453 Mount Pleasant Road, has carried on a recorded vote of eight to one. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Utley, Sless, Martin, Carpenter and Toski, Van Tilborg, Mayor Davis. Those opposed, councillor McCurry noting conflicts for both councillor Vanderstel and councillor Wall.
Point of clarification?
Yeah, the point of clarification, madam clerk, that viewer may think that we're doing approving the being taken out of the trigger lands. In fact, the recommendation before us was that their request be denied at this time and that a procedure we put in place for that to happen in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah. Let's move on to. Where are we going now? So we're going to go to. Yes, we'll now consider the final matter that led, I think, to the reason why we're discussing the previous matter. And that, of course, is bylaw 12021, which is a bylaw to adopt the City of Branford official plan. And of course, there was a delegation on that. So I believe councillor Martin, you've got the motion for first and second reading of that bylaw?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I move seconded by councillor McCurry. The lead be given to the mover and seconder to introduce the following bylaws for first and second reading. 12021, bylaw to adopt the City of Branford official plan envisioning our city 2051, 2021, 20. Committee of the Whole Community Development Report 2021-01-19.
But just, just to clarify, I mean, we've dealt with it. This is coming to us from a previous committee of the whole, our public hearing. So it's, it's coming to us for first and second reading, so there can be no amendments at first and second reading. When it comes forward for third reading, then there can be amendments. So I understand there may be one. So any discussion then in respect to first and second reading, knowing we'll probably have a more lengthy discussion with a potential amendment at third reading? So madam clerk, would you please administer the vote on first and second reading?
The first and second reading of bylaw 1-2021 has carried on a recorded vote of 11 to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Vanderstel, Utley, Sless, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter and Toski, Van Tilborg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, so if I can get, I believe councillor Wall, you have the resolution for the third and final reading of bylaw 12021.
Can I get it brought up on the screen? All right, move by myself, seeking a seconder, that bylaw 12021 be taken and read a third time, be finally passed and signed by the mayor and clerk.
Do we have a secondary for that third reading? Councillor Van Tilburg, all right. All right, so it's, thank you councillor Wall. So any discussion, and I understand councillor Sless rightly, you may have an amendment. I'd suggest, given we've got a lot to deal with tonight, why don't you get your amendment on the floor? And then after that, we can have general comment or discussion about the bylaw if someone wants to.
Could we pull that up on the screen, please?
Got it right here, Mr. Mayor.
Who's, who's, who's moving this amendment, who's seconding it?
I've got, I had the resolution emailed to me. I, I don't know whether that means I'm moving it. I presume it did.
Yeah, well, I assume it's coming from you and councillor Utley, so I guess one of you can move it.
Either one, it doesn't matter.
Okay, so I'm going to say that councillor Sless, you're moving it. Councillor Utley, I think you're seconding it. You're both involved in it. So if you could just read it out, then councillor Sless, we've got it up here.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's move by myself, seconded by my ward mate councillor Utley, that schedule A to bylaw 1-2021 be amended by identifying modified policy area 26 point, area 2688 Gulf Road on official plan schedule 10, modified policy area, and by adding the following modified policy area text to the end of section 6.9, modified policy areas, areas 2688 Gulf Road. In addition to the core natural area designation of lands identified as area 2688 Gulf Road on schedule 10, low-rise residential uses may be permitted within the limits of the developable area to be defined in accordance with the detailed planning, archaeological, servicing and environmental studies, including an environmental impact study to ensure significant natural heritage features are protected to the satisfaction of the city and the conservation authority. Within the developable area, low-rise residential units will be developed in accordance with the residential designation and implementing zoning bylaw. And if I could just speak very briefly to that, Mr. Mayor, councillor Utley and myself, along with planning staff, Alan Waterfield, went out and we walked the property. And there was no question that there was a mistake had been made in identifying it all as the modified area, the core natural area. There's about three, three and a half acres of very developable land that was overlooked in the the high level view of the property. This has nothing to do with lands coming in or coming out of the settlement area. This is already in the, in the city. What it is, is a redesignation of existing property within the city that in the opinion of the owner and the opinion of councillor Utley and myself and of the opinion of our, our planning staff, that a mistake was made. It's a small mistake, but it's a very large mistake to the property owner. Their land got re-designated without any due process. And as the proponent indicated, they, they weren't aware that it had even been changed. So it's really, what we're dealing with here is a housekeeping cleaning manner. It's not a, we're not doing anything that would jeopardize the approval of the official plan at the ministerial level. It's simply a case of doing what's right. And what was overlooked in the first look, in a detailed look at the property, the mistake was realized and this is an attempt by staff and the board councillors to correct that mistake. So I would encourage everybody to support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you councillor Sless, and thank you for getting on the floor. Just to remind everybody, so there's only one speaking opportunity on this one, five minutes, so got quite a list here. Councillor Utley, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased that the Joniacs brought this to our attention. They were in a bit of a panic with less than two months to go to this evening's decision. So there's a lot of good work put in by Alan Waterfield and Nicole Wilmont in making this happen and working it into the official plan. So thank you to staff and thank you to the Joniacs and I hope you get to enjoy your legacy. Thank you.
Councillor Van Tilburg.
Yes, is the land currently designated core natural?
Through the mayor to the councillor, the land currently has a residential designation as well as.
Yeah, but so it was going to move into core natural, is that my understanding then? And we're trying to stop that?
Right now, it has a residential designation, but it also has other natural heritage features identified on other schedules in the current official plan. So there is already a provincially significant wetland recognized on the property. So even under the current official plan, environmental impact studies would be required in order to develop.
I totally understand that. I went through the whole O M B hearing. Is this tied to that waterfront master plan and the O M B hearings on those lands or is it separate from that?
It's in the vicinity. I don't believe.
Yeah, it's, it's on the flip side of the road. So I didn't know if that got encompassed and this was switched during that period? Because what my question to you is this, I know everybody else received notification if their land was changing designation. So I'm assuming either the parents did receive it or we messed up. That, I guess that's what I'm kind of looking at. Would we do that and not send any notification?
Well, they were aware, as the delegation had said, they had sent in an email in, in May, bringing this to our attention.
But this was done some time ago, that to core, core natural.
It was proposed through the, through the draft official plan, so with the materials.
Because when you look at, read the rest of this, you see all the significant stuff mentioned and that is all still there, still protected. So nothing's really changing. The only thing that we're doing is that we're recognizing what is naturally there. That is not, not actually significant wetland, is not heritage designation. It is, it is a developable parcel, parcel of that.
We're recognizing that there is development potential on the property and the actual limits of that area will be defined through the study.
So, so this parcel did not, was not, did not go through that court hearing where they were, where they were basically drawing the lines for us practically based on city and I guess developer proposals at the time when we were looking at that whole zone.
Those hearings predated my time here, so I can't say with certainty that they were involved in that hearing or not.
That's pretty important. That is a pretty important piece to know, but I believe I'm pretty comfortable when you look at what's written here and, and what's been asked of us, but I just, I'm concerned that I can't understand. I think that, I think notification has to be given when you're doing something as big as this. I mean, that is what got us into those lawsuits in the first place. So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what's been happening with my computer, but my hands have been going up and down all night long. Been moved down the queue several times, but it must be at my end. Just, I want to thank the ward councillors for doing the work on behalf of the constituents. So this is just correcting an error anomaly or an error as they put it to fix this, this problem for Mrs. Joniak and her family. I will wholeheartedly support this. And I just do the viewing public, this has nothing to do with adding land in that wasn't part of our designated area, growth area. It was land that's already in, it's just changing some of the zoning designation on as part of the official plan. So I will be supporting it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to the ward two councillors and staff for fixing this mistake. It's unfortunate that the proper notification was not given to the property owners. I think that's very important. Anytime we're doing something that will affect the value of someone's land, we need to make sure that they get proper notification of it ahead of time. So that if they have objections to what's being proposed, they can bring that forward to council, so the council can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Councillor Vanderstel.
Thank you, your worship. Through you two, I believe there is one lawyer in the house. This, first of all, I support this 100%. I understand, you know, mistakes happen as a housekeeping item. We need to make sure that we're in keeping with our notification process. This one made it in under the wire, I think, was Joniak for coming in and explaining very well, very clearly, very succinctly what the problem was and how it pertains to today's vote. Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Heidi, this one made it under the wire. If there's another housekeeping item that comes up after we approve their reading of the official plan and we find out that another mistake was made or housekeeping item needed to be cleaned up after we've already approved our official plan. Number one, I guess there must be a process by which people can clear up those misunderstandings. Number two, would the city be found negligent in any way, shape or form? And are we opening ourselves up to some sort of a legal action?
So through the chair to council, Heidi DeBree, City Solicitor, Director of Legal and Real Estate Services and General Manager of People Legislative Services and Planning. To answer your first question, Nicole Wilmont will clarify that this is not a mistake per se. And I also think that she can clarify the process by which if we have to notify the province before they give final approval of certain issues that may be housekeeping items, if they were in fact housekeeping items, the process that you could do that by. And, and with respect to a legal opinion about whether or not in approving an official plan, council could be found to be negligent, I would highly recommend that we bring that legal opinion to you in closed session and that it relate to a specific decision of council. A general opinion of that nature, I think, would not be very useful in this situation. And it's certainly something that would be subject to solicitor client privilege.
Thank you.
Thank you, through the mayor to the councillor. So yes, thanks for the opportunity to provide clarification. So I do want to say that this, this isn't a mistake or an error on the staff, on the part of staff with respect to our official plan program or our notification requirements. We have followed the notification requirements as per the provisions of the Planning Act with respect to our official plan review. And we've gone above and beyond with respect to holding over 10 public information centers. We've utilized an extensive campaign with respect to online and newspaper notification. With respect to this particular property, I do want to point out that when the matter was brought to our attention and requested that we come on out to the site and see what's happening sort of on the ground, that, that, you know, request was granted and staff did go out. And what's really happening here is really a meeting in the middle. The current official plan has both residential and natural heritage system identification on that property. Through our proposed official plan or new official plan. Through our proposed official plan or new official plan, we've taken it a step further to recognize that there is a nat a provincially significant wetland and woodlot on this property, which are regulated by the G R C A. Either way, whether it stays residential or it goes core natural area, further environmental studies are required in order to define what is developable on this area. And respectfully, through that process, they may find that there is no developable area through that process. That's the point of doing the studies. So what we've done and what's before you is is a meeting in the middle. We're recognizing that the property will maintain its core natural heritage system designation. But it does open the door for the potential for some development on that property, subject to those applicable studies. So I think that we've made that compromise. If would you like me to answer your question about housekeeping, though?
I would apologize.
Sorry, just with respect to the housekeeping.
Do I have a do I have a floor here or do I not have the floor? You're on mute, Mayor.
So much for the space bar work. Yeah, you still got about a minute left, Counselor.
Sorry, I sort of interject Nicole. My my housekeeping terminology and my mistake terminology. I was picking up on other statements that members of council had made during this discussion only. It's not in reference to any mistake that may or may not have been made, nor is it a reference to housekeeping, which may have been an issue in this in this instance. I appreciate the clarification and thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Heidi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Counsel McCurry.
Mayor, thank you. And through you to staff again, within the written document that we received from the person that appeared before us today. There were certain statements made about promises made by the municipality many years ago and with respect to servicing. And I guess to what turned out to be the creation of the wetland. Within the last couple of decades, I wonder if staff are planning to provide council with an update on their response to those particular items that were raised. Certainly not tonight, but is that something we could have in the next cycle?
Through the mayor to the councillor, I I think that we could definitely provide council with it with that type of response. It those issues do predate myself as well, so I'd have to take it back to my colleagues in in Public Works to get a fulsome response. But I think we can provide that to you for the next cycle.
That'd be excellent. And would the clerk accept that as that exchange's direction?
For us. I'm sorry, through the mayor to councillor McCurry to answer that question, what is before you right now is a bylaw. So I was just double checking with Nicole, she accepted that verbal as direction outside of that and.
Super, thank you very much.
No problem.
All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, just as a point of order, I I'd like to apologize to staff for characterizing this as a mistake. I I understand what they're saying and yeah, I I think there was just something that had to be addressed, whether it was an oversight, whatever we wanted to characterize. It wasn't a mistake, nobody did anything wrong. I think maybe the designation could have been a little broader and a little more defined, and and that's what we're cleaning up tonight. It's it's nothing that anybody did wrong. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right, not seeing any other speakers for the amendment. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the amendment?
The amendment to bylaw one dash twenty twenty one has carried on a recorded vote of eleven to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Okay, not seeing any other amendments. We're at third reading on our new official plan. We had amendment. Does anybody wish to speak to the bylaw before we I call the vote for third reading? I'll say something. I think this is a very historic moment, and I think the mayor should comment on it. This is this is the culmination of a years long process that actually began with the prior council. And we know that this official plan will set the the stage for the continued growth and prosperity of our community in a managed way that that we've determined. And is also a very necessary component of the development of the boundary lands, which we know with what's been happening over the last two years. We need those lands, we need them on stream to meet the employment land needs and the residential land needs, housing opportunities, employment opportunities that are there. But because our land holdings are not as extensive as we'd like, it is difficult to meet that demand. So it's just it's we 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 have to market. If this is probably one of the most important achievements of this council. So I'd just like to say that. And then, Madam Clerk, if you please, call the historic vote, third reading of the official plan bylaw.
The third reading of bylaw one dash twenty twenty one as amended has carried on a recorded vote of eleven to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we'll now move into the items, the committee matter items that were separated for discussion purposes. Counselor Intowski, can you please read the motion to place all separate items from committee reports not previously voted on on the floor?
Yes, Mayor, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Carpenter that all items in the committee reports, items one twelve point one to twelve point four, separated for discussion purposes be approved.
Deal the separated items. So we'll go first to, I believe, twelve point one point three. That's proposed proposed regulations for short term rental accommodations. There was a conflict declared on that. So any discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on that matter?
Item twelve point one point three proposed regulations for short term accommodations has carried on a recorded vote of ten to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Utley slash McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis, noting councillor Vanderstelt's conflict.
All right, let's move then to the next item for that was separated, which is item twelve point two point one from the Social Services Committee, the Children's Services and Early Years Funding Update. Counsel Weaver, I think you want to put an amendment on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This amendment's moved by myself and it's seconded by councillor Intowski. The amendment reads that Mayor Davis, as a member of the Ontario Big Cities Mayors and councillor Intowski, as a member of the Board of Directors of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, be requested to advocate though through those respective organizations to request the province. The provincial and federal governments support accessible childcare as an essential component of economic recovery from the COVID nineteen pandemic. And that this resolution be forwarded to the Ontario Big Cities Mayors and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities.
All right. So any discussion on the amendment? Other than I'll say I'm pleased to do that. There have been some some recent changes that the report does talk about. And I quite agree with the councillor Weaver, this this issue of daycare, it's important in terms of not reviving our economy, our economy is actually in many ways in many sectors doing okay. But certainly for those sectors that that need a lot of help and for our economy move forward and could well be a lot of production offshore coming onshore. You know, daycare will be an ever more important component of a successful economy. So happy to to take on the the role that this assigns, that your amendment assigns to me. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
The amendment to item twelve point two point one Children's Services and Early Years Funding Update has carried on a recorded vote of eleven to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
So the resolution's been amended, that one coming out of Social Services, any discussion on the that amended resolution? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please take the vote on that.
Item twelve point two point one Children's Services and Early Years Funding Update as amended has carried on a recorded vote of eleven to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash McCurry, Martin Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we'll now move to from the committee of the whole community development, item twelve point three point three point two, which is re the one eighty Grand River Ave because of councillor McCurry's conflict. Any discussion before I call the vote on that? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on that item?
Councillor Wall, we're just waiting for your response.
I have voted if I won the affirmative.
Thank you, I will note that. Item twelve point three point two Applications for Zoning Bylaw Amendment P Z dash eleven dash twenty and Draft Plan of Condominium twenty nine C D dash two zero five zero three for one eighty Grand River Ave has carried on a recorded vote of eight to one. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Utley slash Martin and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis. Those opposed, councillor Carpenter, noting councillor Vanderstel was absent at the time of the vote and councillor McCurry's conflict.
Oh, sorry, point of order, Mr. Mayor, and through you to Tanya, I have a conflict with that item as well.
Right. Yeah, yours and as well to the next one that twelve point three point three, which was the ten Jubilee Ave. Both you quite correct, councillor Vanderstel, both you and councillor McCurry to clear the conflicts on that. So any discussion on that item? Yes, Counselor Sless.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one and also the one we just voted on. It should be noted that this is to refer them back to the proponent to have further consultation with the with the neighborhoods. So I I would encourage everybody to support having more conversation. So I hope we get total support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, all right, seeing no further hands raised. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on this item?
Item twelve point three point three Applications for Zoning Bylaw Amendment P Z dash ten dash twenty and Draft Plan of Condominium twenty nine C D dash two zero five zero four for ten Jubilee Avenue has carried on a recorded vote of nine to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Utley slash Martin Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis, noting councillor Vanderstel and councillor McCurry's conflict.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I also want to confirm, so what can do your records also confirm there's only two remaining separated items for the committee reports? Twelve point three point eight and twelve point four point one, I haven't missed any of that.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, so let's go to twelve point three point eight. That is the regulatory payday loan establishment licensing, one ninety one ninety two King George Road. Counsel Weaver, you've asked, let's be separate. And just a reminder that on this, you have one speaking opportunity up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually just hoping we could hear from communications on the survey that was conducted and get sort of a synopsis of the survey findings. Oh, and just while that's coming up, I'd just like to thank the members of council that spoke against adding another location a couple of weeks ago when I was absent from council. Maria.
Through you, sorry, I was trying to fix the lighting there. Thank you, councillor Weaver. Through you, Chair Davis, to the committee. Based on council's direction, it was now about ten days ago. We issued a what I would call a quick poll, while it did have a couple of questions. So that we could verify the place of residence of the participant as well as their postal code. It it really was a survey that asked one question about whether or not the city should extend the limit of payday loan establishments across the city. We launched it on the Let's Talk Bramford online engagement platform. And also promoted it through our social media channels. And we provided some context in terms of what led to us reaching to the public again on this issue. We received two hundred and three responses. Ninety eight percent of the responses came back with the response no to the question, should the city extend the number of payday loan establishments from nine to ten? And two percent said yes. So that that was the response, six days of the survey. And that that came back after just a a couple of posts that were shared across the city's social media channels. So a fairly robust response, given the short period of time for people to complete the survey.
Okay, thank you for that, Maria. Just if I could just have clerk clarify, so if we didn't want to support this, it's it's a it's a no vote. Is that can you confirm that?
That is correct.
Sorry, I was asking the clerks.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Through the mayor to councillor Weaver, yes, what is before you is to increase to ten and add the address in.
Okay, so I I'm sure it's no surprise to members of council, I won't be supporting this. I would appreciate your support on this. If you remember, last term, myself and councillor Van Tilburg did do a lot of work to bring this forward. And I think we're going in the right direction by lessening the amount we have in the city. And I think adding one respectfully, I I think is the wrong direction for our community. So I I will be voting no.
Counselor Intowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions for clerks or licensing. I don't know if that's you, Tanya, or if. There you are. So some of the questions that came up last time and I and I I called to ask some of the questions. So I I'm hoping you can share them here. Between us, so the ninth or the tenth license got closed down because nobody applied for it and you followed our direction. And then we had this other one come up recently, asking to to take that tenth license again. Were there any other organizations or businesses that that called looking for a license in between then that you had denied?
And through the mayor to councillor Intowski. So as we noted in the report back in February, we do get from time to time inquiries for these types of licenses. And if we have capacity, and at that point, up until the February report, we were full, we were at our ten cap. So when the business was closing and they notified us of that, we participated in getting a report before council rather quickly for the February cycle. So that you would be aware of the change in the market, so you could make a decision based on that. And then we did receive a. did receive a, closer to the council date, February 23rd, we did receive one request located to that address, connected to that address.
Right, but had there been other people looking for a license that we didn't have capacity for?
Through the chair, absolutely.
And that, that we had turned down?
We have turned them away. Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. And I guess that's all I've got for you, Tanya. I, I want to go back to some of the conversation. I still will not vote in favor of this. We, we made the decision to start reducing this kind of activity because, for good reasons, you know, it's a, it has a negative effect on, on our residents, and it creates a perpetual cycle. And that, that, that leads to, you know, a cultural change in our, our community. There was conversation about limiting business. We did this with the clothing bins. We did exactly this with the clothes, clothing bins. We limited, you know, how many could be in a space, and how many licenses it could be. And I don't know, clerks could probably tell us how many we used to have, and I know it's a whole lot less now. So, and that was because of, of what it was doing to our community. So we did make those decisions. We do make those decisions. This location is zoned, it can, it has 50 other uses. There's, there's 50 other different types of businesses that can go in here, and, and we've also said no to other people looking for licenses. So I just don't think this is appropriate for so many reasons. So, so I also hope that Council will vote against this. Thank you.
Councillor Vanderstel.
Thank you, Worship, through you to staff, to Maria. Maria, how many, this was a six-day survey, was it? Sorry, you're muted, Maria. Sorry.
Through the chair, that is correct, was...
Have we ever done a six-day survey before?
Pardon me? Sorry?
Have we ever completed a six-day survey before?
Through the chair, no. We, we, we've been pretty close. The assisted funerals quick poll that we did earlier this year was 10 days.
Okay. Maria, have we ever seen, what would you call it, relatively robust response? Have we ever seen an overwhelming majority of 97% on a survey like this?
Through the chair, no, that, that is the highest differential that we've seen in a quick poll.
And based on your, yeah, based on your experience, Maria, is, do you think there's any reason to expect that a shorter survey will render different types of results than what we're used to? Is, you think there's a correlation there, or is it just a hot topic item? Why do you think this is so much different than all the other surveys we've done?
Through the chair, I think it, I think the fact that it is one question does make it easier and more convenient for people to respond. I also think that this particular issue is a hot topic, and one that people had an opinion about, that, that they wanted to share. In, in terms of the length of the survey, while six days certainly is not ideal, we, we recommend a minimum of two to three weeks for a survey to be in the field. Looking back at the engagement that was done regarding this issue prior to staff writing the initial report, there were 237 responses, and that was a much more fulsome survey. I believe there were 10 to 15 questions on that one. So I do think there's certainly something to your assessment, that because it was something quick that people could just vote on, that, that they did so quickly. I also think, honestly, because we have been promoting the Let's Talk Branford online engagement platform a lot, that we had more participation because of that, because we're seeing more participation across the board on all of the engagement campaigns that are featured on that platform.
Thank you, Maria. Mr. Mayor, I just, I appreciate your latitude here, but I do have another follow-up question. Maria, being at May, and seeing this, the survey results that we've, as we've seen on this one, perhaps we can take these as lessons learned going forward. Perhaps it's a different way of interaction with the public, where a, a quick, you know, one, two, three question survey, which does not take up an extended period of time in their, you know, in their, in their daily lives, may garner a better response. Is that something that we should be mindful of and start, start monkeying with and playing with, as, as in terms of the length of survey?
Through the chair to the councillor, we could certainly look at that. Research has shown us that anything that exceeds 10 minutes does not get as, as positive or robust a response. That said, there are certain issues that do require a little bit of more explanation and a little bit of a deeper dive. An example of that would be the engagement that we did on the governance review. Because there was a lot of explanation required before every question, it's just going to take longer to do some surveys versus others. Whereas this one was, was quite simple, a, a, a simple request that we could ask people to weigh in on.
Great. Thank you, Maria. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you. I have a question for Maria. With this question, was there any background information provided regarding the fact that we'd just taken this license away from a, a property?
Through the chair, we, we did an introduction saying, basically summarizing the report that went to Council, and that Council had directed us to reach out to the public and ask what their opinion was. And we had the previous reports related to the issue were under the background material on the page.
Okay, thank you. The question is, a, a survey is only as good as the question that's asked. And I'd just like to read the question. "The city of Branford is currently considering increasing the cap on the number of payday loan establishments in the city from nine to 10. Do you think the number of establishments should be increased to 10?" Looking at that on its own, I would vote yes for that, because there's, there isn't anything there to tell people that this is a license that was previously held, that we were at 10, went down to nine, and that we did that without informing the property owner. On a, on a previous issue, somebody said notification is absolutely important. And I hope that councillor will vote in favor of this tonight. Because this is something that, I think the property owner should have been notified. This affects the value of their property. They have a tenant ready to move in because of the leasehold improvements that have been done to this unit are ideal for a payday loan business. And so it's, it's set up for that. We recently approved cannabis stores within the community. We don't have licenses on those. We can't reduce the number of those. We can't control the number of those. And, and that's probably more harmful than, than what the payday loan business is. And, and we have no control over that. And we've seen recently that there's been illegal activity at some of the legal cannabis stores. So there's, there's obviously, we didn't get all the changes we wanted with, with the cannabis licensing. And here we have a chance to do something about payday loans, and I think we're being a little too heavy-handed with this. The property owner was not notified that this change was coming forward. Had they been, they could have been at Council previously when we were taking away that license. If I'd had that information, I would have voted differently at that meeting. We might not have taken the license away if we had a wholesome report that included information from the property owner. That information wasn't there because the property owner wasn't even notified. He didn't have a chance to oppose the removal of that license. So I think this is something that, just out of fairness, is something that, we need to pass this, because this is something that this property owner was counting on, getting a new tenant in there. In, in the time of COVID, with the pandemic going on, it's very hard to get a new business to step up and, and open up. And for, for obvious reasons, it's going to be very hard to make a go of a business in this environment. And the fact that this property owner has a tenant lined up, I think we should allow this to go forward. And just out of fairness, because, because of the lack of notification, I hope the Council can support this. Thank you.
Councillor Governor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to correct something. This is the second time today that I've been lobbied by real estate agents, one on this matter, one on a previous matter regarding moving some items from into zoning. But the, I think the misconception here is that the property owner owns the license, or the property owner has some rights here. The license is owned by the operator of the facility, in this case payday loans. So the payday loan operator let the license lapse because he or she's business moved. The leasehold improvements on the said property were done by the, not by the property owner, but by the individual that ran the payday loans. That's who normally does. There may have been some incentives, but they were done. And so by providing any one property with a said license gives that property a leg up or an advantage over other rental properties, because they have a license for such said business. We didn't have anybody come forward to us that was going to operate a business and say, "I'd like to operate this business, so I need this license." So, but we did have people that before, when this license did lapse, that they had asked us for a license, and we were, they were told we didn't have licenses. The big problem I see we have with this whole procedure and process is we don't have a process for how licenses are going to be dealt with. Is it, is it our intention that every time a payday loan company goes out of business, that that license disappears? Or is there a procedure that we, we allow that license to go to whom? First person that gets wind of it? What is it? We have no process. We have no procedure about what we're going to do when licenses become available, as businesses either close, or if we reduce the licenses, we don't even know what that is. So, you know, this, we, we rush to this process to try and correct the problem, I get that. But we haven't had a procedure or a process put in place or suggested to us how we're going to deal with licensing going forward in the future as licenses change. And again, the license belongs not to the property owner, but to the person that runs the business. Thank you.
Councillor McCurry.
Mayor, thank you very much. I'll, I'll come back to some of the points that Councillor Martin made. First of all, to thank and congratulate Councillor Weaver on his original initiative, which I think satisfied the desires of all members of Council, that, that this type of industry, though legally operating, possibly isn't in the best interest of some of the folks that they serve. So, and it's a shame that Councillor Weaver was away when this came up at committee. Quite coincidental, but we missed out on his commentary at that point in time. I would say that if I, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, we had 10 of these companies in 2019, we attended them in 2020, we attended them in 2021, and if this passes tonight, we'll have 10 of them in 2022. Councillor Martin's comments about the survey, I think, were, were also accurate. The survey question perhaps was a bit simplistic, and perhaps in stating that we were adding a license, maybe wasn't entirely accurate. I also want to comment on what Councillor Carpenter just said. I think he's absolutely correct, that like much of what we do, we do something, fix it, and then do it over again. And we didn't really establish a process by which we would give notification of the demise of the license. Councillor Carpenter is correct that the license goes with the operator and not the owner of the property. However, the reason this is before us tonight is because the owner of this property, who, who I think Councillor Carpenter referred to as a Realtor, had made significant leasehold improvements to the benefit of his tenant, which he will lose if he's unable to house a successor business in there. So I, I think what we have before us tonight is an opportunity to compromise. We still, we still recognize the, the initial intent of Councillor Weaver's initial resolution on this matter, to cap the number of payday loan stores. But I think we also are able tonight to demonstrate some fairness to the business community, which we, which is one of our, our major tenants in, in this corporation of the city of Branford, is to be fair to our, our businesses. That's why we implemented the business tax fairness measures a number of years ago, and why we all are so favorable when a developer comes before us with a project that's going to add jobs and affordable housing in this community. So I, I'd like everybody to, to press all the buttons tonight, to, to hold firm on, on maintaining the number of outlets at 10, which is historically what we've had the last couple of years, to be fair to this particular business. And also to, to perhaps hark upon Councillor Carpenter's suggestion that there is some reason to perhaps improve the process whereby we can demise the numbers of these outlets that are in business in the city of Branford. So I would, I would urge everybody, in spite of Councillor Weaver's good work on this, and I know his desire to reduce the numbers tonight, I would urge everybody to vote in favor of the resolution, and let's come back and fix the process at a later date.
Councillor Vantilberg.
Just some clarification. 10 is yes, and 9 is no. Is that correct? Mayor Davis?
Yeah, if you vote in favor of this, it's, I believe it's, we'd leave it at 10, or the impact or the outcome is 10, I think. Let's, let's get it up so we all
Thank you.
look at it. Does that help, Councillor Vantilberg?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Did you wish to speak to it?
No.
Yeah, I'll speak to it. So I'm one of the, those that was not here for the great debate that took place in the prior council. And I'll admit on this one, I've had a lot of difficulty, because I have a long history as a lawyer in terms of dealing with fairness, which in many ways is what lawyers deal with day to day, and trying to figure out what that means, and how you balance that against other larger goals. And having, it was unfortunate I didn't hear from Councillor Weaver at the last, it was two weeks ago, so that I've better understood or understand now what the implications of the debate was that the prior council had. And, and I think the public input we received has made it somewhat clearer to me. And it seems that our community, and generally, this was probably not the most well thought out and executed policy in respect to payday loan shops. But I think the intent here is clear, that it's lesser, fewer rather than more. And that's a philosophy and policy that, for example, underlies liquor stores. Like, the more you have, the easier they are to use, the more people use them who maybe shouldn't be using them, or using the product. And it's, I think the, the policy that underlies what Council did, and I was trying to decipher that and figure that out, isn't, isn't, that is in fact that. And so the, my understanding is, was it 10 because you didn't want to take away from established businesses? And Councillor Carpenter is correct, that's why it's orientated towards the operator, not the property owner. So after having received the further information, a better understanding of what Council did previously, what policies underlie that, and intent, I cannot vote in favor of the resolution as before us tonight, with the understanding that I've reached. And, and also, of course, reading some of the comments that came in that I think underscored the nature of the debate, especially for those of us that weren't there when you had that debate. So, anybody else want to speak to it? Seeing nobody? Okay. Madam Clerk, let's call the vote on it.
Item 12.3.8 Payday Loan Establishment Licensing for 190-192 King George Road has failed on a recorded vote of 2 to 9. Those voting in favor, Councillors McCurry and Martin. Those opposed, Councillors Weaver, Vanossel, Utley/McCurry, Carpenter and Toski Ventilborg-Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, we'll move to the last item that was separated. It's item 12.4, that is the It's item twelve point four, that is the report coming from the special committee of the whole meeting last week. Read the. Governance review. So Counsel Martin, you asked for this to be separated?
Yes, thank you. Through you to staff, phase two of the project is basically doing the review of the ward boundaries, is it not?
Through the mayor to Counselor Martin, yeah. So it takes the evidence and the decision of phase one and then looks at the boundary lines for. The wards as part of phase two, looking at the next election and multiple elections after that.
Okay, thank you. And this project was, was bid as. Different cost for, for the different phases, was it not? Like if we, if we cancel phase two, we, we save money not having that work done?
Through the mayor to Counselor Martin, that's correct. We did stage the report so that we would have this decision point after phase one and then should council direct us. To either move forward with phase two or terminate the project. That was certainly an option available to council.
Okay, and is it, is it an option to skip phase two and go straight to phase three?
Through the mayor, certainly you could do, choose to do that.
Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment. That we change clause B so that instead of proceed with phase two, that it be skip phase two and proceed to stage three. And I see Counsel Vanderstel seconding that.
Yeah, Counsel Vanderstel is seconding that. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, the, this is something that I don't think will yield much in the way of, of changes to the ward boundaries. And being as Ward Three is, is the largest by population. Myself and Counsel McCurry have the most gain by changing the boundaries, but I don't think the change would be significant enough. And anytime more boundaries are changed, causes confusion for the electorate. I know I saw that the, with the, the changes the last time. And people are confused about what word they ran if, if they get moved from one to another. And I think it's, it's a waste of money to do this review, given the, the small changes, if any, that will come back. And I hope council will, will see the merit in that and move forward to stage three of this report and save some money.
Counsel Carpenter.
And to staff, what's the cost of phase three?
Through the mayor to Counsel Carpenter, phase three will be completed by staff. There would be no consulting dollars associated with it, so there's no direct expense for it.
Thank you.
Any other, anyone else want to speak to the? Anybody else want to? Counsel McCurry, then Counsel Sless to Counsel Martin's amendment.
Thanks, Mayor. I fully support Counselor Martin's amendment. We talked about it earlier today. There's not going to be any appreciable tilting of any playing fields in any ward to our knowledge. The, really the only significant growth we'll see over the next couple of years will be in the first ward. Which has some of the lowest numbers now, thanks to the prior alignment. Which saw Counsel Martin and I benefiting from an influx of thousands of voters migrating sort of through the municipality from the first ward. So I think, I think we can get by the way we are. As Counsel Martin said, it causes a great deal of angst for some. It causes a lot of confusion for many. And I'm not sure that the exercise, it really is borne out by any sort of necessity and certainly. We can use the money that we can save by not proceeding.
Counsel Sless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a very worthwhile process to go through. I, I just think it's premature. I, I think we're going to have to go through this process and possibly the election after the next one or the one after that. Depending on how fast we, we start building out in the expansion lands. But, but I think has been said, the dynamic of, of the population growth won't be such that it's going to, I don't think upset. The balance of distribution in, in the next couple of elections. But I, I think it's certainly coming, once especially north of Powerline starts to develop. I think three and four are probably going to shoot up significantly, and I think we're going to have to readdress on how that's. How that's redistributed because they're going to become then proportionally not compatible. But I think right now. I believe eighteen thousand is roughly the, the population of the voting pot people in Ward One and twenty two thousand roughly in Ward Three. And the rest are in between that range somewhere. They're significantly close. I believe eighteen and twenty two are the low and the high ends. So to me, that's not going to change to any great degree between now and, and the election in, in a year and a half. I think what will change is in the future when, when, like I said, when development starts happening in particularly north of Powerline. That's going to change the dynamic, dynamic dramatically. And that's when we'll have to make an adjustment. So I think it's a good idea. It saves some money and to me, it just makes sense.
So not seeing any other speakers then to this amendment, Madam Clerk, would you take the vote on this amendment, which essentially takes up this. Phase two out of the study.
Thank you, Counsel Weaver. The amendment to item twelve point four point one, City Council Governance and Employment Status Review and Ward Boundary Review Phase One Report. Has carried on a recorded vote of ten to one. Those voting in favor, Counselors Weaver, Vandersel, Utley, Sless, McCurry, Martin. And Toski, Van Tielborg, Wall, Mayor Davis. Those opposed, Counsel Carpenter.
All right, so it's been amended. Everyone has, they want one speaking opportunity up to five minutes to speak to this. Counsel Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to speak to this. Item C is still in there, but that's, item C is the, the third one, which is of course. Reviewing. Counsel's remuneration, I thought if we're going to, you know, if we're going to not look at the ward boundaries and account the new people that came in. We shouldn't be looking at, at an increase in counselors wages either. Because you know, in Ward Four, we've had extreme amount of growth on Gray Street. Extreme amount of growth in Garden Ave, extreme amount of growth in Johnson Road. None of that was part of the numbers that was calculated in this review because. It wasn't updated to the updated numbers of the houses that are being built as we speak. So I, I, I think there would have, you know, Ward Four will grow dramatically. Thank you.
Yeah, not seeing any other speakers. I'm going to ask. Okay, so can I ask, can someone ask, can someone ask for that third item to be separated? Nobody? Counsel Carpenter, I think you're asking for it to be separated. If I can kind of speak to that. You know, we've been given some information by, by staff. Certainly the compensation for counselors appears to be, and what they did was they compared us to comparable municipalities, which. Are tier one municipalities, which means municipalities that have responsibility for everything and they're not part of a region. And municipalities of a similar size. I thought the, the information respect to counselors compensation is pretty much close to the median. Mayor's was a bit different. The compensation for the mayor of our city is, is a little bit less than average. But I think the average is really skewed by the city of Windsor where the mayor's paid like hundred ninety nine thousand dollars. So I think. That kind of skewed it, but I see it the same way. It, it, it appears that the compensation appears to be, let's call it. Competitive and within an appropriate mean or average. And so unless we really think that the compensation levels are out of whack. Why spend any more time or money on it? So I'm not, I'm glad somebody asked for a separate vote because. I won't vote in favor of C. So anyway, any other discussion then before we? Take the vote here. Nope. Okay. So Madam Clerk, could you please take, we'll take phase. See, I guess, but that's the phase three that I was just talking about. Let's, let's call the vote on that first.
Certainly. So the separate vote for the clause C as it stands.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure what we're voting on. Are we voting to do the review or not do the review?
If you vote yes, it's just, it's not an amendment, it's just a separated vote. So if you're voting yes. You're voting yes to it remaining as something to be done, the compensation review. If you're voting no, you're saying. No, let's not bother.
Thank you.
Clause C to item twelve point four point one being City Council Governance and Employment Status Review and Ward Boundary Review. Has failed on a recorded vote of zero to eleven. Those opposed, Counselors Weaver, Vandersel, Utley, Sless, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter and Toski, Van Tielborg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Okay, let's go to, so call the vote then on the remainder, which is essentially A.
Through the mayor, just point of clarification would be clause A and the amended clause B. Clauses A and B for item twelve point four point one, City Council Governance and Employment Status Review and Ward Boundary Review Phase One as amended. Has carried on a recorded vote of nine to two. Those voting in favor, Counselors Weaver, Vandersel, Utley, Sless, McCurry, Martin. And Toski, Van Tielborg, Mayor Davis. Those opposed, Counsel Carpenter, Counsel Wall.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we're on to resolutions. We've got six, I think six resolutions. One we've already dealt with, that was that Triggerlands one. So we have thirteen point one citizen member vacancies. The city of Branford boards and committees, actually no vote here. This is really just sort of an announcement. So Counsel Wall, if you can just read this aloud. It's putting the committee on notice that there are some openings coming up and if you're interested, please apply. So please read it for us.
Sorry, Mayor Davis. Citizen member vacancies for city of Branford boards and committees, section three point eight of committee. Corporate twenty eight policy appointments policy, in keeping with section three point eight of corporate twenty eight policy appointments policy. The following to be read aloud at a televised, televised meeting. The city of Branford is currently seeking volunteers to serve on the following committee. Branford Airport Board, Active Transportation Subcommittee, Branford Accessibility Advisory Committee. Branford Public Library Board, Branford Heritage Committee. Interested citizens can find further information on these appointments, including recommended skill sets, mandates and. Application forums on the city website, www.branford.ca. In the city's clerk's office, Branford City Hall during regular business hours or by calling five one nine seven five nine four one five zero. The deadline for submitting completed application forms to the city clerk is four thirty PM on Wednesday, March thirty first, twenty twenty one. City council wishes to ensure that its committees, boards and task forces reflect the diverse nature of Branford's population. And invites all residents to consider these opportunities.
Thank you, Counsel Wall. So the announcement's been made. We don't have to vote on that. So we'll move to item thirteen point two, which is. Resolution from the Special City Council regarding tentative settlement with the amalgamated transit union's conventional service in Branford lift. Counsel Carpenter, I think you've got that, you're the mover. If you would please read it and state your second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself and seconded by my wardmate, Counselor Cheryl and Toski. That the settlements reached between the corporation, city of Branford and the amalgamated transit union, local six eight five. Conventional service and the corporation city of Branford and the amalgamated transit union, local six eight five Branford lift. For renewal of the respective collective agreements to cover a period from July first, twenty twenty to December thirty first, twenty one be ratified. Thank you. And I just want to thank everyone for their hard work on this, including the workers themselves.
Thank you, Counsel Carpenter. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on this item?
Counselor Weaver, we're just waiting on your response.
It still hasn't come up yet. I still have the view casting motion, but I'll vote in the affirmative, please.
Thank you. I will note that.
There it is.
Yep, I thought, just saw it come through. Item thirteen point two being the resolution from Special City Council and Camera Meeting held on March ninth, twenty twenty one. Regarding tentative settlement with the amalgamated transit union conventional service in Branford lift. Has carried on a recorded vote of eleven to zero. Those voting in favor, Counselors Weaver, Vandersel, Utley, Sless, McCurry, Martin. Carpenter and Toski, Van Tielborg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
And in a similar vein is the next resolution, thirteen point three regarding a tentative settlement with QP local one eighty one. OWB and the housing unit. I believe Counsel and Toski, I think you have, you're the mover of this one.
I, I am. Thank you, Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Carpenter. That the settlement reached between the corporation, the city of Branford and the Canadian Union of Public Employees, QP local one eighty one. OWB and Housing Unit for Renew, Renewal of the Collective Agreement to cover period, the period of March thirty first, twenty nineteen to April first, twenty twenty three. Be ratified.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote?
The votes not coming up for me. I'll vote the affirmative.
Thanks, Counsel Weaver. Item thirteen point three being the resolution from Special and Camera City Council Meeting held on March twenty third, twenty twenty one regarding the tentative settlement with the QP local one eighty one. OWB and Housing Unit for Renewal of Collective Agreement has carried on a recorded vote of eleven to zero. Those voting in favor, Counselors Weaver, Vandersel, Utley, Sless, McCurry, Martin, Carpenter and Toski, Van Tielborg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
So move now to item thirteen point four, which is a resolution for the transfer payment agreement, safe restart agreement, phase two. Re municipal transit funding. I think Counsel Vanderstel, you're the mover of this. If you please read the resolution and state your second.
You are correct, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by my wardmate, Counsel Weaver. One that report number twenty twenty one, two twenty six, transfer payment agreement, safe restart agreement, SRA. Phase two municipal transit funding be received and two that the director of fleet and transit services be designated as the. Authorized representative with signing authority on behalf of the city for the purposes of section four point two. Execution of amending agreements of the safe restart agreement, SRA. Phase two municipal transit funding transfer payment agreement and three. That the clerk be directed to place the transfer payment agreement for the safe restart. Agreement phase two municipal transit funding agreement between Her Majesty's Queen. And the right of Ontario and the corporation of the city of Branford on the sign, signing by law for execution by the mayor and clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Vanderstel. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on this item?
Item 13.4 Transfer Payment Agreement Safe Restart Agreement, SRA, Phase Two Municipal Transit Funding has carried on a recorded vote of 11 to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash Mercuri, Martin, Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Thank you. On to item 13.5. This is the temporary use bylaw to ease parking restrictions for outdoor patios. So I believe councillor Wall, you've got, you're the mover of this. Would you please confirm this, identify your second and read the resolution. Your second is councillor Weaver.
Yeah, sorry. I don't have this, but I will gladly read it if you just tell me which one it is. There you go. Well, the outdoor patios. Yep, sorry. I'll read it. Amendment to the City of Branford Zoning Bylaw 16090 respecting a temporary use bylaw to ease parking restrictions for outdoor patios. PZO22021 Citywide Financial Impact None 2021-99. That zoning bylaw amendment application PZO221 initiated by the Corporation and the City of Branford to amend the City of Branford Zoning Bylaw 160-90 to exempt parking restrictions for outdoor patios during the COVID-19 pandemic be approved in accordance with the applicable provisions as noted in Section 9 of Report 2021-99 where temporary use bylaw shall subject clause B below remain in full force and effect for a period of time not to exceed three years from the date of adoption. And B, that staff be directed to place a necessary bylaw to rescind the temporary use bylaws before city to council for approval at the earliest available meeting, three months after the expiration of termination of the City of Branford's declaration of emergency. And C, that planning policy 005 Patio Branford Private Patio Emergency Pandemic Recovery Policy and Planning Policy 004 Patio Branford On Street Patio Emergency Pandemic Recovery Policy be amended to extend the respective expiration dates of each policy to three months after the expiration of the termination of the City of Branford's declaration of emergency and the necessary bylaw to affect those amendments be presented to council for approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on this?
Councillor Weaver, I'm just waiting for your response.
Yes, I'll vote me affirmative.
Thank you. I'll note that.
Thank you.
Item 13.5 being the amendment to the City of Branford Zoning Bylaw 160-90 respecting a temporary use bylaw to ease parking restrictions for outdoor patios, citywide has carried on a recorded vote of 11 to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash Mercuri, Martin, Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
All right, item 13.6 that had to do with the request to remove land from the Trigger area. We've already dealt with that. 13.7, the CAO COVID-19 Emergency Update. And there is coming out of that update, a resolution councillor Van Tilburg, understand you're going to be the mover. Should please confirm that, identify your second and read the resolution.
I am the mover and I'm looking for a second on this exciting topic.
Councillor Wall, your wardmates indicated he'll second it.
Well done councillor Wall. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Wall, that report to 2021-250 for CAO COVID-19 Emergency Update 32321 be received and that the Director of Economic Development and Tourism be authorized to enter into amending agreements with the current Community Cultural Investment Program, CCIP, core operating music, core operating museum funding agreement, grant recipients, Brant Historical Society and Glenhurst Art Gallery of Brant to amend the calculation of the grant for 2021 based on 2019 operating expenses and that, number three, that the application of the Community Cultural Investment Program terms of eligibility as they relate to the 2021 grant calculation only be waived in order to base the maximum eligible amount on the operating expenses of the year previous to the previous fiscal year.
Thank you councillor Van Tilburg. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please take the vote on this item.
Item 13.7 CAO COVID-19 Emergency Update for March 23rd, 2021 has carried on a recorded vote of 11 to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash Mercuri, Martin, Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Okay, moving on to notices of motion. I believe we have two councillors slash, yours is the first. Please read the title of your, of your notice of motion.
Federation of Canadian Municipalities election of, to the board of directors.
And councillor Wall, did you have?
Absolutely, I do. Rainbow crosswalk installation.
All right, so that's notices of motion. Actually, Mr. Hutchings, you've just popped up here. Do you want to say something? Must have hit the video by mistake. That's assigned to me from staff. Then you just. So move on to bylaws. So bylaw one, we dealt with earlier this evening. So councillor Weaver, can you please read the motion for sec, first and second reading of the bylaws?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just need to confirm my second or first. I'm not sure if councillor Van Der Stel can second as he's got some. Yeah, so I'm seeking a second.
Tilburg, yeah, Van Tilburg is seconding it.
Thank you very much. That leave be given to the mover and seconder to introduce the following bylaws for first and second reading. 542021, bylaw to authorize the execution of agreements individually dated and listed on Schedule A attached here too. One, transfer payment agreement to the sale, safe restart agreement, Phase Two Municipal Transit Funding Agreement between Her Majesty, the Queen and the Rite of Ontario and the Corporation of the City of Branford. And that is City Council, March 23rd, 2021. Bylaw 55-2021, bylaw to amend bylaw 70-2010 being a bylaw to adopt various city of Branford policies and to create a corporate policy manual by repealing and replacing corporate policy 46, film policy 2021-5, and community of the whole operations administration reports. Bylaw 562021, bylaw to amend bylaw 37-83 being a bylaw to regulate traffic in the city of Branford, and that is on Spalding Drive, Section 1. And bylaw 572021, bylaw to amend bylaw 14488 being a bylaw to regulate parking in the city of Branford. Again, Spalding Drive, Section 1. Bylaw 582021, bylaw to amend bylaw 144-88 being a bylaw to regulate parking in the city of Branford. That's on Diana Avenue. Bylaw 592021 being a bylaw to amend bylaw 55, 522021 being bylaw to fix fees and charges to the collection, collected by the Corporation of the City of Branford for 2021. Bylaw 602021, bylaw to amend bylaw 190-2020 being a bylaw to appoint members of council to various committees, boards, advisory committees, and task forces. Bylaw 61-2021, bylaw to amend bylaw 160-90 being a bylaw to regulate the use of lands and the locations and use of buildings and structures in the city of Branford. Bylaw 62-2021, bylaw to amend bylaw 16090 being a bylaw to regulate the use of lands and the location and use of buildings and structures in the city of Branford, which is a temporary use bylaw to erase parking restrictions for outdoor patios. Bylaw 632021, bylaw being a bylaw to amend bylaw 70-2010 to repeal and replace planning policy 004, which is the Patio Branford On Street Patio Emergency Pandemic Recovery Policy. Bylaw 64-2021, being a bylaw to amend bylaw 70-2010 to repeal the replay and replace planning policy 005, which is again is for the Patio Branford Patio Private Patio Emergency Pandemic Relief Policy. Bylaw 652021, bylaw to amend bylaw 160-90 being a bylaw to regulate the use of lands and the locations of use of buildings and structures in the city of Branford. Bylaw 66-2021, bylaw to amend bylaw 1916090 being a bylaw to regulate the use of lands and the location of the use in buildings and structures in the city of Branford. Bylaw 672021, bylaw to amend bylaw 14488 being a bylaw to regulate parking in the city of Branford. And that is on Woodlawn Avenue. 682021, bylaw to amend bylaws 14488 being a bylaw to regulate parking in the city of Branford, and that is for Longboat Run West. Bylaw 692021, bylaw to amend bylaw 14488 being a bylaw to regulate parking in the city of Branford. That's Forsyte Avenue. Bylaw 702021, bylaw to amend bylaw number 16090 being a bylaw to regulate the use of lands and the locations and use of buildings and structures in the city of Branford. And this is by removing the holding provision for Lusanne Holmes in Phase One. And finally, Mr. Mayor, bylaw 71-2021 bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the Corporation of the City of Branford with respect to the meeting held today on March 23rd, 2021.
Sorry, bylaws just arrived on my desk. Thank you councillor Weaver. Actually, I don't think there are any conflicts on these bylaws. I shouldn't say that, but the conflicts declared earlier and I don't think they, they cross-reference into these. So. But that said, does anybody want anything separated for first and second reading? You know, raise hands physically or electronically? Oh, sorry councillor. Okay councillor, while you're waving at me, do you want ones separated?
Sorry, I was just hoping clerks could confirm your statement. So I declared a conflict of interest earlier in the evening. There's nothing that I, I don't know how this works with the bylaws. I just don't want to put myself in call.
Yep. I think we'll have the clerk confirm it, but Madam Clerk, can you confirm that?
I mean, I do trust you, Mayor Davis.
Let's, let's have the clerk confirm it.
Certainly. So through the mayor, it is the responsibility certainly of the member, but none of the items that we looked at for the conflicts declared for either yourself, councillor Van Der Stel or councillor Mercuri have a noted attached bylaw. And certainly take a pause and look at the items, but I do not see any of those items coming forward as a bylaw tonight.
Thank you.
Councillor Carpenter, do you?
Yes, I have a handful. First act, but that's okay. 59 and 71, thank you.
59 and 71?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so let's deal with those two first. Deal them as a package councillor Carpenter, is that okay? Or individually?
That's fine.
Okay. So bylaws, 59 bylaw 71, any discussion? First and second reading? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you please take the vote? Oh, sorry. I don't see a raised electronic hand, but now I'm seeing.
Councillor Mercuri?
Councillor Mercuri, if you want to speak to these two.
I do, Mayor. I'd like 59 and 71 a separate vote on each, please. Thank you.
Okay, let's deal with 59 first. 59, discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk? So if you're going to, if you want to discuss, please use the raised hand, the fist, the electronic raised hand button, please.
Yes, I did use the electronic raised hand button, Mr. Mayor. Can we just, just for the viewing public, maybe mention what those two bylaws are, so everyone's on the same page?
Yeah, Madam Clerk, can you please tell us what 59 is? 59 is what we're dealing with right now.
Certainly. So bylaw 59-2021 is a bylaw to amend the fees and charges connected to Committee of the Whole and Operations Report both from March 2nd.
So, any discussion on 59 before we take, call the vote on first and second reading? Seeing neither electronic hands or anybody waving at me. So Madam Clerk, please take the vote on this one.
The first and second reading of bylaw 59-2021 has carried on a recorded vote of eight to three. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash Martin and Toski, Wall. Those opposed, councillors from Mercuri, Carpenter and Van Tilburg.
All right, let's go to item bylaw 71, which is the sort of the catchall confirming the proceedings of the council with respect to the meeting we had tonight. So any discussion on that? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote on that 73, 2021.
The first and second reading of bylaw 71-2021 has carried on a recorded vote of 10 to one. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash Mercuri, Martin and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis. Those opposed, councillor Carpenter.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the balance of the bylaws for the second reading?
The first and second reading of all remaining bylaws has carried on a recorded vote of 11 to zero. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash Mercuri, Martin, Carpenter and Toski Van Tilburg, Wall, Mayor Davis.
Madam Clerk, move on then to third reading. Please, let's see. Councillor Mercuri, can you please read the resolution for third and final reading bylaws?
Yes, I certainly will, Mr. Mayor, as soon as the clerk can post it for me to read from. It's moved by me, seconded by councillor Martin, that bylaws 55, 2021 through to and including 71, 2021 be taken as read a third time, be finally passed and signed by the mayor and clerk.
Councillor Carpenter, do I assume you would like 59, 71 separated here at third reading?
Unless the clerk's willing to carry my, my vote in opposition through, I'd be fine.
All right, well, let's, let's follow the proper procedure. So let's deal with 59 first. Any discussion on 59? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please take the vote on 59, third reading.
My apologies, Mayor Davis. We're just correcting a typo. It should be 54-2021 for a third and final reading. We started tonight at 54 as the signing bylaw. Just wanted that noted.
Yeah.
My apologies for that. Certainly. So we're starting with the vote for 59, correct?
Correct.
Certainly. Thank you. The third reading for bylaw 59-2021 has carried on a recorded vote of eight to three. Those voting in favor, councillors Weaver, Van Der Stel, Utley slash Martin and Toski, Wall, Mayor Davis. Those opposed, councillors from Mercuri, Carpenter and Van Tilburg.
If we can move then to bylaw 71. Not seeing any hands raised for discussion. Madam Clerk, could you please take the vote?
The third reading of bylaw seventy one dash twenty twenty one has carried on a recorded vote of ten to one those voting in favor counselors Weaver Van der Stelle Utley slash McCurry Martin and Toski Ventilborg Wall Mayor Davis those opposed Counselor Carpenter.
And the Madam Clerk, please take the vote on the balance of the bylaws third reading.
The third reading of all remaining bylaws has carried on a recorded vote of eleven to zero those voting in favor counselors Weaver Van der Stelle Utley slash McCurry Martin Carpenter and Toski Ventilborg Wall Mayor Davis.
All right, so while I'm signing the bylaws, we'll go around doing ward announcements, I'll just go from clockwise as you appear in my gallery screen, which I'll start with you Counselor Carpenter.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, nothing to report, just hoping that residents are able to get out and enjoy the weather since we're going to be getting rain, I think, this week, so it was a great weekend.
Indeed, it was, Counselor and Toski.
Certainly no events to to report, but just giving everybody, I guess, some some virtual cheer as they start to plan their gardens and I guess we'll be the ones embracing the rain that's coming and hopefully it doesn't go too far into the spring and we can get get our veggies and our flowers for the pollinators in there.
Yes, the butterfly wave project, I now know a lot more about, Counselor Vanderstel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we Counselor Weaver and I have both received multiple reports as of late with concerns and duly concerned people, parents concern for the health and safety of their kids because of speeding that's been happening seemingly more often in parts of Ward one. If for whatever reason you don't feel comfortable to contact Branford Police, I'm offering my services to make sure that if you do identify any of the vehicles or time of day or whatever it is, you make sure you contact me, I'll make sure that the report gets sent on to the Branford Police Department. It's a serious issue, I am I'm seriously concerned about the health and welfare of some of the kids in the neighborhood. Identify the vehicle, if you can't identify the driver, if you can't get a license plate, if there's a number on the side of the truck, if it's a contractor's truck and you need to, you know, let us know some way, I'm ready, I'm waiting, I'm willing to help change this this type of behavior, it's unwarranted, in some cases, it's just unprecedented happening somewhere that we didn't expect to see it happening, but I want you to know that Counselor and Weaver and I have have your back on this one and we will help make sure that the Branford Police Services get the get the facts about what's happening, so thank you.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you, just like to remind everyone that with the rain that's forecast and any snow that's left melting, the waterways are going to be dangerous, so make sure you keep your children and pets away from the waterways.
Counselor Van Tilburg?
Yeah, let's talk Mohawk Lake District, we have a virtual open house on Thursday, March twenty fifth, it's at eleven AM to one PM and seven PM to nine PM and we normally have physical open houses, but this is going to be a virtual one, the way if you wish to participate in the open house, you can submit your questions online, you can watch the open house on YouTube, you can telephone in if you want to speak, be a speaker at the open house, you can email us at COBplanning@branford.ca if you wish to put forward your comments or if you wish to be a participant and have your have your positions spoken to. We have two items coming before us on the Mohawk Lake District, two presentations, and these are in the pre-planning stages and this is where you get to see some of the stuff coming forward, this is the way we're always going to progress with this with the Mohawk Lake District, we're always going to go to the public first and get their input, it's been the way we've always done things, it's the way we always do things, it's why Mohawk Lake is where it is at today, so I'm looking forward to your participation, if you, I guess I will say if you want to call in because you don't have email and you don't have the let's talk on Facebook, call into the city of Branford five one nine seven five nine forty one fifty, extension five five four six, and I'll say that again, five one nine seven five nine forty one fifty, extension five five four six, and anything I've missed and more, I know Counselor Wall will cover.
Counselor McCurry?
Mayor, thank you, you should probably start setting the timer for these announcements. I have three things, first of all, folks should be aware that the city of Branford is moving to biweekly yard waste starting first week in April, so make darn certain that you check the schedule, folks, because it's going to be a pretty big change to the way we do things, look in the paper, look online, call your counselor, but make sure you understand what happens going forward. Second thing I want to talk about is a really cool show coming up at Glenhurst, it's a retrospective of Doris Slater Titus who is a semi-famous Bradford artist two decades, starts March twenty third goes to May twenty third at Glenhurst, and last thing, Mayor, it's it's another show put on by Canadian Industrial Heritage Center, Brand Museum and Archives, Laureate and the Brand Theater Network and it's the second of their community events, you remember the first one was Stuttel on the Grand, this one is Memories of Branford's Italian Community, there's a preview event March twenty seventh, main event fifteenth of May, you can check with any of those partners, again, it's CIHC, BMA, Laureate, Brand Theater Workshop, or email me or any other member of council, we can provide you with more info.
Counselor Utley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, two things, one, there's been some reports of dirt bikes using the trails, and if you see that, phone the police or our bylaw officers, or if you can take pictures and videos of these people running our beautiful trails, secondly, with the nicer weather here, it's an opportunity to go out for a walk, it's also an opportunity to pick up litter, and there's lots of it after the winter months, so please clean up your your street or your block or your park and but stay safe doing it and be proud of your community, thank you.
Counselor Schloss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I would just like to encourage everybody to to please monitor closely the Brent County Health Unit website, it's BCHU, they're constantly evaluating openings in their vaccination program and readjusting the qualifications to be able to get vaccinated, I'm a prime example, yesterday I learned I could I qualified to get a vaccine, I got online, I registered and I got a vaccine this morning, so it's that simple, and I would encourage everybody to get it so we can get this thing behind us, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I now have vaccine envy. Counselor Wall?
Hey, thank you, okay, thanks Counselor Van Tilburg, the Mohawk Lake thing is super duper important, I hope as many people as they can will come out and join us on Thursday, I also want to give a huge shout out to the neighborhood associations, that's the EcoPlace Community Association, they've been a big help in getting the word out about this and they are always looking for people to be involved with the neighborhood association, you can find them on social media at EcoPlace Community Association, then the East Ward EcoPlace Community Association is actually pulling together a covid-friendly neighborhood cleanup, if you want to partake in that, I would just ask very kindly that, you know, you don't gather in groups, stay within your own social circle and, you know, if you are out, you pass somebody, you know, keep your social distance and just kudos to that group for getting together and wanting to make the community a better and more cleaner place, and then finally, the Downtown Central Neighborhood Association, they are also always looking for new people to be involved with what they're doing, it's super exciting times, and I think that's it for me, so yeah, check out the neighborhood associations, they are incredible and they need you. No, let's talk Branford, that was the other thing I wanted to say, the city of Branford has this amazing website, it's let's talk Branford, type it into Google, there's like a million things on there that the city is doing and they want to hear from you, participate, be a part of the democratic process, it's amazing, let's talk Branford, yeah.
Okay, I think that covers everybody and I'm just going through signing the second copy bylaws, I've actually signed the originals, so with that, until I guess next Wednesday and we have another statutory public hearing dealing with some proposed amendments to our development charges by law relating to our boundary lands, so until then, I hope everybody has a a safe and hopefully dry weekend.
Good night, everyone.